A vehicle hit a city property, in fact, the Garden Grove Police Department's little radar trailer. As the person hit that trailer, it continued and went home. I called the police. The motorcycle officer came out, we gave him the address, there was actually myself and two of the witnesses. I saw the motorcycle officer leave Bailey Street, and nobody was in the back of the motorcycle. The next day, I went to the police station to find out about the report and if somebody was arrested. Neither was done. I went to the police department today to look at the police report. Now, today is eight days later. Believe it or not, there's still not a report, and nobody's been arrested. That Garden Grove property could have been my vehicle, it could have been somebody inside a vehicle, but yet, nothing's been done. And lastly, Epstein did not kill himself. Thank you.
Trustee Lan Quoc Nguyen.
Good evening, I didn't realize I could come be called that early. My name's Lan Nguyen, I'm here to speak on item 2.8. I believe it to be the application for the Ted Parade. Let me introduce myself, I'm a member of the executive group and of the Ted Parade, right now being planned in Westminster area. Called a little so I got Ted Parade Committee. I am also the spokesperson for that committee. So as you can see, I've been working and planning for that Ted Parade for some time now. And I want to say that Ted is the time for the Vietnamese community to put up their best presentation, best face. That include the best culture, best song they can have. And most important of all, we want to put up the best show of unity in the community. That's a time where it's important, unity is a very important theme for that parade. And this year, we plan, the team for the parade this year will be gratitude. And the gratitude is to show our gratitude to, for kindness to America. And part of that is we want the community to be united and present that message in the parade. We have extended our invitation to the city. Most of you, if not all of you, have received invitation. And we now still compiling all the response to the invitation. I can tell you that we always open to any group, any organization to join us in planning for this Ted Parade here in Westminster. And as of today, we still in early stage of planning, and we still in application process. We have received overwhelming support from the community in respond and help us to put together this event here. And we have received a lot of support from the government agency and elected official who assist us in planning for this as well. And as you can see, we in still early state and I just want to say that last week, I put out the press release with the, which would update the planning for that Ted Event. And I have here have a couple copies, and we can share it with all council members. It's sort of give it, it give you an update of where we are in terms of our planning for the essay, for the event. And I read the application today, I want to point out some of the incorrect information in that. In the application, it's mentioned something about the day registration for the planning committee for the event in Westminster. And I want to point out it, the information, the application would say that it had not been registered anywhere as of today, November 5th. I want to bring, I happen to be the lawyer who working for the application for that committee. And I have in my hand the article incorporation which will fire with the state on August 22nd, 2019. That is the day that the group will form. Oh, that can be real quick, and also the same information will fire on September 4th, 2019. So it has been registered, so I don't know how the information came into the application. And today, what happened, would you see this came about only because of what happened in Westminster? I would be the first to say, I would be very embarrassed with what happened in Westminster City. And I want to owe the City of Garden Grove not to bring that to West, to Garden Grove, not to get any close to that. We try to take care of it, but it's just, it's a good time for, I want to ask the City of Garden Grove to assist us and, and stay away from the internal conflict of the community. And keep it away from Garden Grove, and then I, I owe the city to deny this application to, to that, to keep whatever happened in Westminster away from, from Garden Grove for the better of the city. And I thank you, must forgive me some extra time to speak to them.
Du Nguyen. Du Nguyen. Long Nguyen. Long Nguyen followed by Trung Noakh Sun.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Long Nguyen, I'm a internal vice chair of the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California. As everyone know, this city is multicultural and diverse, and one of the most diverse city with the pride of beginning, one of the best city to live in. The mayor, city council, men and women, are the people who are at whose statistic in serving of foot in the internet of the city and the resident for. With the experience, capacity, and dedication of the present station, state here who serve the people. The continual development of commercial facility had make the city much better. For this reason, the vote yet for Ted Parade 2020 in the city will increase the pride of many people in the city. There will be a thousand of a people attending and with the number of people who know the city on the web will be more thousand of the Vietnamese people from all the state will come here to visit and make some business easier during Lunar Ted Holiday. Leave vote yet for Ted Parade in 2020. It will, it will make the city Garden Grove work great, and will now greater again. Glad to let you all, thank you very much.
Trung Noakh Sun, followed by, can you read that one? Nguyen Phan is next.
Yeah, tôi là Trương Ngọc Sơn, cư dân của thành phố Garden Grove, tôi ở tại đường Garden Grove 9675. Tôi tới đây để yêu cầu quý vị nghị viên của thành phố Garden Grove vote zed cho cái cuộc diễn hành hàng năm của người Việt chúng tôi, nhất là những người Việt lưu vong. Chúng tôi mong rằng thành phố Garden Grove chấp nhận vì tôi thấy rằng những thành phố khác, ví dụ như Minnesota đã được diễn hành nhiều năm. Nay tôi muốn thành phố Garden Grove giới thiệu cho người Việt chúng tôi trên khắp thế giới về thăm thành phố Garden Grove. Đấy là điều thứ nhất, điều thứ hai nữa là tôi thấy rằng cái người tổ chức trong những cuộc diễn hành tết của cổ truyền chúng tôi vào đầu năm âm lịch thì đã tổ chức trong nhiều năm rồi, đã có kinh nghiệm mà không có xảy ra điều gì. Cho nên tôi nghĩ rằng các quý vị ở trong hội đồng thành phố, các nghị viên sẽ bỏ phiếu đồng thuận cho người Việt chúng tôi, nhất là ông Phát Bùi, chúng tôi đã ủy nhiệm, tin tưởng để ông tổ chức cái cuộc diễn hành tết này. Chúng tôi mong được như vậy, xin quý vị chấp thuận cho chúng tôi. Tôi phải nói đến đây và phải đến đây, là chúng tôi phải, một cái người lớn tuổi gần 80 tuổi rồi thấy rất là đau khổ, rất là buồn vì người Việt chúng tôi, những lớp trẻ đáng em cháu chúng tôi mà có cái sự chia rẽ. Cái đó là chúng tôi rất thấy làm xấu hổ trước mặt quý vị, xin quý vị lượng tình cho chúng tôi. Và chúng tôi phải nói câu này ra thật là chúng tôi phải rất là nhỏ lẹ ở trong tim chúng tôi, con tim chúng tôi rất đau. Người Việt không có bao nhiêu người đi lưu vong, chúng tôi là những người đã ở tù cộng sản 10 năm. Bây giờ sang đây lưu vong được chính phủ Mỹ cho lưu trú ở đây, được nhân dân Mỹ dang tay ra ôm lấy chúng tôi, cưu mang chúng tôi. Mà bây giờ tự người Việt, những người em thuộc hàng em cháu chúng tôi làm những việc chia rẽ. Chúng tôi rất đau lòng, tôi xin ngừng ở đây và xin một lần nữa xin tha thiết kêu cầu tới quý vị nghị viên, hãy bỏ phiếu đồng thuận, vote zed cho chúng tôi được tổ chức cuộc diễn hành tết trong thành phố Garden Grove. Và cũng là một lần nữa tôi lập lại để cho người Việt chúng tôi khắp nơi được về chiêm ngưỡng, được du lịch tại thành phố Garden Grove, để giới thiệu thành phố Garden Grove với người Việt chúng tôi ở khắp nơi, trong nước Mỹ cũng như ngoài nước Mỹ. Xin cảm ơn quý vị, xin kính chào quý vị.
Nguyen Phan, followed by James Su.
Nguyen Phan. I'm sorry, I speak Vietnamese, no speak English. Thưa ông thị trưởng thành phố Garden Grove, cẩn thưa quý vị nghị viên thành phố Garden Grove và toàn thể nhân viên của thành phố Garden Grove. Tôi, Phan Nhựu Hữu, cư ở Washington và cũng là cư dân của Orange County. Sao tôi muốn nói Orange County là vì nó cũng cùng trong các vùng của chúng ta. Hôm nay tôi lên đây, nhiệt liệt, khẳng thiết, xin quý vị hãy cho cộng đồng người Việt quốc gia chúng tôi đã 10 năm diễn hành tết nguyên đáng, thưa quý vị, tết nguyên đáng là gì? Tết nguyên đáng là tết của Việt Nam chúng tôi, và cái tết cổ truyền rất là trăng trọng và tất cả mọi người đều muốn vui trong cái cuộc tết, không bao giờ buồn. Cái ý nghĩ, ý nghĩa của cái tết nguyên đáng là vui, không buồn. Cho nên cộng đồng chúng tôi từ trước đến nay cố gắng làm cái cuộc diễn hành tết để đồng bào khắp nơi đến đây. Và tôi nghĩ rằng qua 10 năm quý vị cũng đã thấy trên hàng triệu người trên thế giới theo dõi, và hàng mười ngàn người, hàng chục ngàn người tham dự, và hàng ngàn người tham gia vào cái diễn hành. Thì tôi nghĩ rằng có cuộc vui mà đầy đủ như vậy, thì tôi thiết tha kêu gọi quý vị nghị viên của thành phố Garden Grove giúp đỡ và cho chúng tôi được giải phép diễn hành tết trong cuộc tết để đồng bào chúng tôi được vui vẻ. Và nghĩ rằng cái thị xã, thị xã Garden Grove này cũng được một cái chương trình vui vẻ và hoạt động trong cái ngày tết của chúng tôi. Yeah, xin hết, cảm ơn quý vị.
It's fair. My Vietnamese is really rusty. And I don't necessarily need an exact translation, but if I could just get, do I, they support or oppose, that's all I need, I don't need all the-
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing, but I would suggest that our own council members should not be that translator.
Exactly, I don't know if there's somebody-
And I would suggest if there's anybody in the audience who could be kind of a fair and impartial translator of the basic message or whatnot, then you're welcome to.
I think we should ask for the volunteer to be interpreter, Julie, I saw Julie raise her hand, thank you Julie.
We just need to know if they, if they support or oppose, basically, we don't need a total translation.
Yeah.
So maybe Julie, you can help to shorten it, and then the most key word is oppose or support, right?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor Jones and City Council. I just felt that it was my duty as a citizen of Garden Grove to make sure that everybody on the council and in our, in our city is able to hear, get, get my interpretation of what the presentation was about. For me, I'm, my name again, my name's Julie Depp, I'm with OC Autism. For us OC Autism, OC means our community. And you know, I think part of this discussion was to talk about unity. And the two gentlemen that came earlier was talking about the, to urge the city council to give them an opportunity or to be considered and to ask for your, your vote, a yea vote, to have a parade in Garden Grove. They mentioned that it wasn't a, a decision to divide the city or to compete with anybody else, but also to make sure that Garden Grove as a city is, becomes a recognizable city outside of, of even this country. Because the parade is covered throughout the, that is observed by Vietnamese community throughout the boundaries of our city. So I think it is a, an urge for them to have your consideration to make sure that Garden Grove is recognized outside of this, through this and to, for, to maintain the culture.
That's great, thank you for that. James Su.
Thank you for the lady who translate for the other two gentleman, and I tried to speak English. My name is James Su, the former president of the Vietnamese National Military Academy Alumni Association. Most of our members reside in this county. And to us, every year, we do organize the Ted Parade. Ted for the celebration and show the solidarity of our community. And we've been doing that for almost 10 years. This is a cultural event, one of the biggest of the year. And the organization who proposed for tonight been organize this event for many years and successfully, exceptionally. We have no complaint from the community, from the city, which happened the last many years. In term of financially and organization. And this proposal be support by our community and also by many organization and businesses. As you all know, you've been participate in those events, you know that. There are two main benefits to this proposal to the city of Garden Grove, if it happen over here. The event will make the city of Garden Grove be known internationally and become a tourist attraction to most of the Vietnamese people around the world. And it also will improve the economic contribution to the city. And today, I'm one of the veteran, I'm here to convey the message from our members and would like to have you vote yes, so. And it successfully, this will be one of the biggest event of the city in the future. And we will try our best to make it happen. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Craig Durfee.
My name's Craig Durfee, founder of Parents Drive for Developed Children, for 23 years. I have a website for those who have been challenged with autism or through dog therapy. It's socialemotionalpos dot R T A just created, it has an 86 score. And I encourage council and our community to utilize that. It took me four days to program. I have a quote here from President John F. Kennedy. Said, "Technology has no conscience of its own. Would become a force for good or depends on man. Yet swayed by digital age myth, we providing our children with remarkable guidance on their use of technology," I quote. It was Abraham, or Albert Einstein, famously said that once you stop learning, you stop dying. This was wrong with our communication of our schools. They have no conscience about what the technology is doing, and this is what we're with our labor. They need healthy students, they need ones who ready to measure a ruler state, maybe a measuring tape, a quarter inch. We need that in our schools, and we need compliance or education codes in Garden Grove. It's up to this council and the partnership you have with Garden Grove to be compliant with all codes. And the union's behind me, so be mindful because I've been talking to them. Now, the next thing is, we have an adaptive taxation program that never lifted a finger for the time I've been here in eight years. You know you almost lost your contract in Garden Grove for $70,000, that's a fact. I have the record. And you're short about $200,000 for the project in terms of maintenance. And there's about another $10 million in labor and apprenticeship program available if we'll go all the way to Dale Street. Stanton, I've talked today, the engineer, they want to go their part on beach all the way to that part of town. You see, mental health is part of our problem, and it's been proven medically. The kids have bike and walking, they sit too much, are going to be much better off. So, I heard from one of the councilmen way back when, how come my district doesn't have it? Well, because I haven't seen a thing, my response to your council saying, Craig, we'll look into it, thank you. I haven't even got a finger from it, and labor knows about it now, okay? You just understand dodging the ball, what's happened to Garden Grove recently, six months of death almost. The tragedy of this ratification, that's all because of technology. Some might document from CNN news. So, here's what we have. We should be promoting Be Well C, as you buy in America, buying Garden Grove Be Well in bike shops. We should be putting the emphasis on these bike trails as part of your master plan, you just adopted. Because that's going to help mental health and buying Orange County, Garden Grove, because the mayor says. Because then people will be eating and buying their bike, and therefore your sales dollars don't go outside the city, pour the report. So I would encourage this council to rather than not respond to my letters and ignore me. Now you have a labor hearing about it. Maybe you should be more responsive to the community and start writing letters to legislators, which I do on a constant basis to inform them. Maybe this council will get more serious about who you represent rather than yourself. Thank you.
John Kelly, followed by Lala Trung.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council staff. My name is John Kelly, vice president with TNT Fireworks. We're the wholesale distributor of Safe and Same fireworks to nonprofit groups who sell them as a fundraising mechanism here in Garden Grove. Have been doing so for the 31 years that I've been doing this. We're here this evening on item 6B. Just curious, listening to the discussion and the outcome. Did have one question. In the staff report, it said that we're going to go from 45 to 30. And we're interested to hear the discussion of, is that going to take place immediately? Is that going to be a phase out program over time? Will that be through attrition? I'll be here for the remainder of the evening. If you have any questions of industry, thank you.
It might be a long night, and I don't want to hold you up, but I think that was contemplated and it's going to be kind of a by attrition over time. I think there's currently 37 last year or something, and that would naturally by attrition go down to the new 30 or something, but, but not overnight. So I don't know if you necessarily feel like you need to stay or want to stay, or if you want to just keep stuff there. But I think that was thought out, and it's not going to be abrupt.
Thank you.
Lala Trung, followed by Tony Velazquez.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor Jones, and good evening, Garden Grove City Council. I would like to first start off by saying thank you so much for the mayor as well as the city council members for attending our lovely event yesterday. Hope you had a good time with our program. And our eyes is very successful, and hopefully we can do it again next year as a tradition. But today, I'm actually here for item number 7A, and I actually have a letter from the office of Congressman Correa, and I have a copy provided to each one. So I'm going to read. Dear Garden Grove Mayor Steve Jones and Garden Grove City Council, I write to you in support of agenda item 7A on your council agenda this evening. Discussion on the potential for a community workforce agreement as requested by the city council. As you may know, there have been three community workforce agreements currently established in Orange County by your city's neighbors in Santa Ana and Anaheim. All of whom are within my district and have been measurable, have seen measurable economic growth and success within their respective communities. Over their past years, community workforce agreements have proven to be a strong leading force in providing opportunities for blue collar workers due to their intentional and inclusive target to hire locally for upcoming construction projects. Which as a result encourages the development of a pipeline of construction careers for our local residents. This agreement would prioritize local hiring, creating vast opportunities for apprenticeships and trade career alternatives for Garden Grove residents. As economic development in Garden Grove is thriving with the new addition of steel craft and other local businesses, I urge you to, I urge you all to open this discussion and develop an agreement in collaboration with the OC LA Building and Construction Trades Council so that good paying jobs and career opportunities may be available and attainable for Garden Grove residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Ah, it came out bad. Tony Velazquez, followed by Norma Kurtz.
Good evening, Mayor and staff. My name's Tony Velazquez, I live at 12572 Lux Avenue in the city of Garden Grove, District 5. I'm a 35-year resident of the city. Went to Earl Warren Elementary, Walton Junior High. I was a graduate of Santiago High School in 2002, where I coached high school wrestling for a couple of years. I'm just here because I, obviously I didn't go to college, I wanted to use my hands and become a tradesman, and I just, you know, would like to see youth be able to get the same opportunity I did, which is get a good paying job that gives themselves and their family benefits. An honest wage for honest day's work and a pension, something that they can rely on to retire with, some dignity. Other than that, I mean, I've got two brothers that are in the trade. Both, one lives in Garden Grove, the other one used to live in Garden Grove. He actually built the Great Wolf Lodge. So, with that being said, I just urge the staff to direct a, excuse me, direct the staff to negotiate a CWA. Thank you.
Norma Kurtz, followed by John Hannah.
Good evening. As mentioned, my name is Norma Kurtz, and I'm here on behalf of Assembly Member Tom Daley. With your permission, I'd like to read a letter from the assembly member. Dear Mayor Jones and City Council Members, I wholeheartedly support the community workforce agreement for the city's capital improvements. The uniqueness, the uniqueness of these types of agreements is that they provide a sound community benefit through local and veteran preference, higher language providing our community with paths to middle-class careers in the construction sector. When local residents work in our community, they also invest their hard-earned wages in the community as consumers. It furthermore provides direct entry opportunities for veteran employment through the helmets to hard hats program in the agreements. And I applaud all parties who are working to include this in an agreement. All this is done for the same total labor cost that is established by the current state's prevailing wage for public works. So there is no additional public cost. There is a growing need to provide career opportunities for high school and college graduates and other residents. The building trades provide these opportunities through the Joint Labor Management Training Program so that an apprentice is learning and earning in their respective trade as they are striving to achieve journey level certification. These training programs are funded privately between the trades and employers and are financially self-sufficient. I respectfully urge you to approve and enable a community workforce agreement. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely, Tom Daley, State Assembly Member, 69th District. Thank you.
Thank you. John Hannah coming up, and Tuon Bu, after that.
Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager. John Hannah, representing the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. I want to thank Tony, also Mark Harding's here with us. So I don't want to be repetitive, but it's really a good deal- So, I don't want to be repetitive, but it's really a good deal for this city. And I wanted to say, building on what Norma was talking about, in terms of, the workforce has got to be paid a prevailing wage. But actually, if you use a skilled and trained workforce through these apprenticeship programs, you're actually paying less. Because instead of having all journeymen, you're going to be having apprentices who are going to be paying a little bit less than a journeyman. And so, you're going to get a benefit there. But the key thing is, is where do you want to invest your money? Do you want to have workers who are going to go home to the inland empire, San Diego, LA, and spend their hard-earned bucks there? Or do you want them to spend them here in Garden Grove? You know, businesses help pay a lot of taxes. This is a great way that those taxes can be put to work and return the investment to those businesses who so generously help us in Garden Grove. I want to say that there's another community workforce agreement that wasn't mentioned in the staff report, and that's the Rancho Santiago Community College District. We call it a community and student workforce agreement because we prioritize our students there. One of the, we have three apprenticeship programs: the carpenters, the electrical workers, and the operating engineers. So, wherever those students live, they're considered a local hire. And ultimately, we're hoping that the city of Garden Grove will partner with Garden Grove School District and possibly Rancho Santiago Community College District to have a seamless effort of people who, if they decide they want to earn while they learn, they can get a priority when there's public works in Garden Grove. I invite all, some of you have been to the carpenters apprenticeship training center in Buena Park. It's where the old Nabisco factory was. This is the private sector at work. It's not government money. It's carpenters' money and our contractors' money, spent to train the best skilled carpenters in the world. And that's what you get when you get a community and student workforce agreement. We have no shortage of bids, and I know that's something that city managers are concerned about at the Rancho Santiago Community College District. We have union and non-union construction companies bidding. They will use mostly a union workforce, but they'll be able to keep their closely-held employees. Why do they bid? Because they'll make some money. And they know that if they get a community and student workforce agreement, they'll get a skilled workforce, and they'll do the job right. So, I wouldn't, I'm pleased with Ernesto Madrano in bringing this to you, and I just want to say, if you have any questions, we're all, you know, just please ask. And if you haven't been to our center, please give me a call. Those of you who have been, you can tell your colleagues how great that really is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Tuon Buongi, followed by Dewey Nguyen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city of Garden Grove. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak to you tonight. My name is Tuon Buongi. I live down the street next to the Garden Grove High School with my wife and two sons. And I am proud as a union member of Local 433. Tonight, I would like to say thank you for considering the community workforce arrangement, which give local hires, such as myself, jobs near home to build towards Garden Grove's future. Currently, I'm working as a Western Anaheim Resort. We're looking forward to see the hotel finish and opening in the next year. I'm happy to be able to have a job that's less than 10 minutes from where I live. But also, let me put my skills and training to work where I live. I became a welder shortly after I came to U.S. in 1992, when I was 21-years-old. Being a welder's hard, been the only job I have ever known. I worked with our union for a while, but after I chose, I'm working local 433, I found out how much better the work was, and how much the trades look after you. I was properly trained for what I was going to do, told not just what to do, but why to do it. Turned to my works as a union ironworker. I have been able to provide my family while I'm enjoying my career. The community workforce arrangement allow for me to work projects locally, like Western. Because of these arrangements, many opportunities I make available to local hires like myself or veterans. I'm grateful for all these opportunities that are available nearby. I hope that the Garden Grove City Council will negotiate with community workforce arrangement with the Building Trades Council, which would provide more jobs for local hires like myself and their family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dewey Nguyen, followed by Alan Blomgren.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. For those who don't know who I am, my name is Dewey Nguyen. I'm the president slash chairman of the Vietnamese TED for 2020 in Bosa, in Saigon, Westminster TED Parade Group. I'm here not to criticize anyone, nor to say anything negative about anybody. I'm just here to say, TED is one of those times during the year where each of us forget about our passes, about our differences, to come together, celebrate a special day, a special event. We're lucky this year, the city of Westminster allowed our group to put a parade together. And the parade that we plan to put together is we'll welcome everybody. As you, council members and the mayor, have received my invitations, I extend my arms to invite everybody to join, because I want to show that our community is a community that is unified. Even though we have differences, but we're unified just for one day. For having a second parade in a different part of town, it does not show any unity. It just shows more divisions. And that's the one time we cannot use that excuse to give us a time to expose or anything about us or our community. We want to work together, and that's what I want. But so far, this potential second parade would cause more division, not just the Vietnamese community, but also division between the Vietnamese community and other communities. Because we're a small group, but yet we're causing a lot of issues in the last year just because one simple event. I don't think that's fair for this resident of Garden Grove, North City, Westminster, as a Vietnamese individual. I think, forget the differences. I open my arms to welcome everyone who would like to participate in our event, in our parade. Notice, it's not mine, it's the community itself. So, for me to come out to encourage you and talk to you, just say, "Join us, be part of the parade." And whoever group that wants to be part of the planning committee, I always welcome. Just to show, one day of the year, to show some sort of unity among our community. So, that's what I want. That's what I want the council members and the mayor aware, that we're not here to cut anyone out, nor leave anyone out. I want anyone to join us. So, please come join us and celebrate a day of happiness and a great new year for all of us, for the city of Garden Grove, for the city of Westminster, and all surrounding city, and especially for the Vietnamese community. Thank you.
Alan Blomgren, followed by Sam Hurtado.
I represent Southland Industries, a Garden Grove company. We do about $200, $250 million of work a year, bringing towards Garden Grove. The CWA is a really great program. We try to hire local labor in our shops and in our offices. A happy employee doesn't have to drive to work very far, so it makes it really good. On projects in the local areas, it's great to do. We've done Martin Luther King Hospital, LAFC, they're all project labor agreements. So, I think the CWA is a great program, and everybody that works close to their home is a better way to go. So, I urge you to support it and vote it through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sam Hurtado, followed by Lan Nguyen.
Mayor, esteemed members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to come before you. I don't want to be redundant, but the benefits from an agreement like this are amazing. I represent, I'm a second-generation sheet metal worker, and I am a graduate of Cal State Fullerton. I won't tell you how long ago, but it was $78 for 12 or more units back in the day, so you couldn't even buy a parking pass for that nowadays. I represent approximately 6,800 active and retired sheet metal workers. Like I said, I'm a second generation. My father and I both contributed 70 years within the trade, so it has provided quite a bit of bread and tortillas. I am a BA for the sheet metal workers, a business agent, Orange County resident, and it's just amazing that we have 1,000 Orange County residents, 49 that reside within your boundaries. And so, those guys just love it when they can not be in the inland empire, or Ventura, or wherever else, when they can work and play in their backyard. I know for me, I coached my boys all the way, I walked on a Cal State Fullerton, so for baseball, but to be able to coach your kids is what's important. And a lot of the guys that are here tonight are, have that ability to stay, work, and then coach your kids, and that's what makes community, absolutely. So, once again, our members just look forward to having CWAs and have the ability to be able to work in their neighborhoods. Tomorrow, we will be, the local hire is one aspect of it, but the helmets to hard hats, and anybody that's a veteran here, thank you for your service. Hopefully, everybody had a good Veterans Day yesterday. But tomorrow, we're going to be graduating eight guys that served in the military. We put them through a program and bring them into our union. And so, with that, I think you see all the benefits of a community workforce agreement. So, I urge you to move forward with it, if you would. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, bud. Lan Nguyen, is it a different, is there a different Lan Nguyen? Oh, sorry. So, I thought, and then I saw him come back in, so I got confused. Followed by Rick Pham.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Lan Nguyen. I am currently a dedicated activist for the Vietnamese-American community. I'm here to ask for your consideration to grant our community the permits to organize the annual TED Parade. Garden Grove, the city, with the largest Vietnamese population in Southern California, the U.S., and in the whole world, outside of the country of Vietnam. We, the Vietnamese who have immigrated to the U.S. as refugees, have assimilated to the culture of this country. At the same time, we would like to maintain and honor our traditions, our heritage, and our culture, so that the younger generations of our community will continue to learn about their roots. The TED celebration belongs to the community, not the city. For many years, the Vietnamese community organized the parade, and we noticed that the TED certainly brings business to the city. It's also time for the Vietnamese from other states and countries to visit their relatives and friends to celebrate the Lunar New Year. The TED Parade has a strong cultural impact on our local community, and also brings business to the city. Therefore, please allow our community to have a chance to continue our traditions and culture by organizing the TED Festival for the better enrichment of our wonderful life in this country. Thank you.
Rick Pham, followed by Sean Drexler.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council of Garden Grove. My name is Ricky Pham. I'm from, actually, I work from Anaheim Union High School District, and I'm here to represent of Anaheim Union High School District. And I've been with the parade for the past six years. This could be the seven years with Vietnamese-American Confederation group that been do so outstanding job. Like I said, I used to do a showbiz, and I used to organize, do the show. But it's come to the TED Parade, it's a huge event. You need a lot of men, you need a lot of workers, I mean, volunteers. So, I mean, when I look at Mr. Fat Buongi, his organizations, and I look at it, it's so professional, and I really appreciate that what he, what the community do for the parade. So, I'm the one organizing all the kids from Anaheim Union High School District, and every year, I take about six schools in Anaheim to join the parade. And every year, it turned out very successful, and the kids in Anaheim is so exciting. Even right now, they are ready. They're ready to, you know, to get fundraising and all that kind of stuff, to get ready for the parade. So, we really want to have, continue for Vietnamese Confederation, Mr. Fat Buongi Committee, continue next school year, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, next 2020 TED Parade in Garden Grove. So, like, I'm Vietnamese community, and I love my Vietnamese community for everywhere, Westminster, Garden Grove, and Anaheim. So, like I say, you know, they give it to other group from Westminster, I really don't know who are they. So, even that, a lot of parents from the kids, and then they say that, they heard on YouTube, they say that, "Oh, this person did this and that," they really scared. So, you know, I'm just sharing with you guys that, like I say, if you guys not give to Garden Grove Parade, Anaheim will not join. So, that's, I'm not just here to ask for you guys, just, you know, give a chance and to have a Garden Grove TED Parade, and it's also help the businesses around Garden Grove too. Thank you.
Sean Drexler, followed by Davi Kretenden.
Hello, City Council, Mayor. My name is Sean Drexler. I'm a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. I'm here to talk about the need for transparency and resident leadership in the development of the Willowick Golf Course. The future of Willowick Golf Course needs to be transparent to and determined by the residents who live in the area that would be affected by private development of the 100-plus acres occupied by the Willowick Golf Course. We've addressed this before, both here in Garden Grove and as well as in Santa Ana. A survey of these residents conducted by the Rise Up Willowick Coalition showed an overwhelming majority support using the 100-plus acres of land to create open space, parks, affordable housing, and community garden. open space, parks, affordable housing, and community gardens. The only way for the residents' needs and wants to be met is through a transparent process where the residents are actively involved in the planning and decision-making. And the first step needs to be the members of this council meeting directly with residents in the Willowick area. The residents are the ones who will be affected by the future development of Willowick, and the residents are the ones who deserve to decide their own future. So I urge you to meet with them. Thank you.
You. Dowie Kritenden, followed by Robin Mercario.
Good evening. My name is Dowie Kritenden, and I'm a longtime resident of Garden Grove. Lived here since sixth grade, so a long time. And I own my own home. And so I'm calling, I wanted to first thank you guys for honoring the flag and honoring God. And that was, that was really good. I was, I was pleased with that. And I also want to say, I'm thankful for what's happening in my community, which I live in the eighty-eight acres. And so, there's been some really good development over there. They've redone our streets and put in curbs and gutters where there weren't, and I wanted to thank you for that. I also wanted to bring up to your attention that we are having some gang problems in, in our community, and, and I am asking for some attention to that. And I've been working with the city about putting in some streetlights in, in, in the two main streets, anyway, that are coming into the eighty acres, and asking for the, to help with our public safety, adding some additional, or putting in some streetlights that the city would take care of. We have a lot of people that are renting now in the area, and, and so, the, the community's gone downhill a little bit from, you know, when there were mainly property owners. So, I would appreciate the, the council looking at what's happening in my area, and I'm thankful for what you're doing also. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Robin Mercario, followed by Robert Harrison.
Good evening, Council. Robin Mercario. I wanted to just highlight item number six and commend the mayor for all of his work on OCTA, having this finally come to fruition. That's been a decade that you've been at this. Thank you. And that's with regards to the bicycle and pedestrian trail that will ultimately go along Stanford to Brookhurst. Thank you for your work, and I'm looking forward to riding my bike alone there. And I also wanted to highlight again the report that you passed at the last meeting, the parks, and you've, of course, seen that to the tune of about thirty-two million, just to, you know, improve and upgrade in capital improvements for our parks. I think we need to look at the developer fees to get that, get some monies towards that. I think it's been a couple decades since we've looked at those. And I also wanted to highlight the seven A, which has been brought up with the community workforce. You're skilled tradespeople, and you keep them local, you keep the money and the income local, that's a, that's an easy, easy A in that. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Robert Harrison, followed by Dao Tran.
I met some of you the other day at the flag raising ceremony. Robert Harrison, forty-year resident, Vice President of Vietnam Vet, Veterans of America, Chapter 1024. I'm the Vice President of the War Memorial Committee in Westminster that built the memorial with the city of Westminster. And I was a part of it when it was just an idea. But I'm for the Tet Parade in Garden Grove. I'm involved heavily in the Vietnamese community. Last Sunday, I was in a restaurant after a prayer vigil at the memorial, where we meet monthly and pray for the three-hundred-and-fifty, four-hundred-thousand South Vietnamese that lost their life and the fifty-eight-thousand Americans. And I was sitting there with seven South Vietnamese military, Arvins, Marines, Navy, airborne, and they were all talking about attending the Tet Parade in Garden Grove. They know the city of Westminster is divided. And, you know, I want to offer something else here. An event like this involves healing for the American Vietnam Vet and the South Vietnamese. When they get together, brothers in arms, it's very important. Anyway, I'm for this event in Garden Grove. A lot of the, after the event that we had with the flag raising, a bunch of us Vietnam veterans were talking about this divide, and we're all saying, we're going to attend Garden Grove. Okay? Anyway, hold it in Garden Grove.
Dao Tran, followed by Dale Softner.
Good evening. My name is Dao Tran. I am a resident in Garden Grove for twenty-eight years, and also worked for the Garden Grove School District for thirteen years. Now I retire. I'm here tonight to oppose the application for Tet Parade 2020 in Garden Grove, leading by Mr. Fat Bu as chairman and Mr. Richard Bu as vice chairman. There are too many reasons I already mail in for the city to take a look at it. And now, I just want to focus on two reasons. The first reason, there is a conflict of interest between two positions of Mr. Fat Bu as a council member, as well as chairman of Vietnamese-American Federation, Southern California. Later tonight, the council will come to an interview for his organization and will vote. So my question is, what seat he should sit? He should sit as a council member, or he should go down here for his organization? And can he ask the question, and he will answer for himself? And third one, will he vote yes for himself? That is the, I think, to me, that is very bad conflict of interest. But the second reason I want to tell you all, because, because, take a look at the, at the packet his organization turning, the last page, page five, and it says, 2019 Tet Parade Committee Team. This should be, this one was already passed for this year parade, for the last parade. And this year, he should have the 2020, because for next year. So, the question I, the first one, the document here is invalid, invalid, and for, for the time. And the second is, just take a look at the Tet Parade Committee, and you see at the, the third line, and you see the name of the Coalition of Vietnamese Veteran Association. So, I want to tell you that Mr. Fat Bu put this coalition on his proposal Tet Parade 2020 in Westminster without asking that permission from that coalition. So, Mr...
Thank you. You need to wrap it up. We have a time limit, and you're over your time limit.
Oh.
Everyone else has been sticking to it.
Oh, so I, my time is up?
Yeah, thank you. Dale Softner, followed by Karen Rodriguez.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Mayor, City Council, before I start on the agenda item, I came before you about a month ago about Vietnam, I mean, the Veterans' Day event, and at that time, there was nothing planned. And I was very disappointed. So, somebody stepped up, and we had a great event yesterday. We had many dignitaries, elected officials who came. And so, on behalf of all the veterans who reside in the city of Garden Grove, as a member of the Orange County Veterans Advisory Council, thank you. There, it's well appreciated. I hope it's the first inaugural of many events for veterans in the city of Garden Grove. Thanks again. Most of you know I have a couple passion items that I deal with. But first, six A, when Stephanie, Council Member Stephanie, and Robin and I were on Parks and Recreation, six, seven years ago, we discussed about the right-of-way, on the OCTA's P and E right-of-way, when we had the open streets that Mayor Jones put through, and we got a quarter-mile done. And I said, wouldn't this be wonderful if it went all the way to Brookhurst? So, thank you. I think it's a great idea. I think it will connect two sections of the city together. It could look a lot of use, so I'm fully in support of that. My second issue is six B. I went and looked into it because I was wondering, what it said about animal feeding of wildlife, and then underneath it, it says that fireworks revisions to Chapter 5.28 are being changed, all the regulations. So I dug down in there, there's thirteen points under 5.28. There's only two that are in the, you know, what's in this memorandum. And one of them kind of surprises me, and it says, "All appeals will be no longer heard by the city council." And there will be no, you know, it says, "Appeals now will be designated by the city manager, and the decisions will be final." Kind of curious about how that's going to work. And also, the city finance department is going to be in charge of putting in fireworks stands, and who's going to do the compliance on that, since we really don't have a fire department anymore? Is the finance department going to be out there on the Fourth of July? I don't think so. So if those kind of questions could be answered, which are not here, that would be really useful to us all. Thank you.
Karen Rodriguez, followed by Cynthia Agüera.
Hello, good evening. I'm Karen Rodriguez, and I'm a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition. I am here today to speak on behalf of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition and asking the city of Garden Grove to be transparent in the process moving forward in regards to the development process of the Willowick Golf Course. Residents have made various attempts to meet with the city and ask for an inclusive planning process that is community-informed, because we deserve open green spaces and the creation of affordable housing in our communities. Recently, the city of Garden Grove has released a, a response letter saying that you plan to comply with the Surplus Land Act and the amendment with AB 1486. However, there are no clear steps or process laid out as to how you plan to do so. For example, providing notice to required entities like open space and affordable housing entities that there is surplus public land available for disposition. We not only continue to ask that the council meet with us residents to discuss our collective vision, but also be explicit and transparent as to how you plan to comply with, as you stated, the California Surplus Land Act and AB 1486, moving forward in the development process. Thank you.
Cynthia Agüera, yeah, followed by Nicholas Dibbs.
Good evening. My name is Cynthia Agüera, and I'm also a member of the Rise Up Willowick Coalition, which is a coalition of residents from Garden Grove, Santa Ana, as well as community organizations who are concerned with the development of the Willowick Golf Course, which is a hundred-and-two acres of public land. On October ninth, you did respond to the lawsuit filed by a court stating that you planned on complying with the Surplus Land Act and the subsequent amendments made to the act by AB 1486 that will go into effect on January first, 2020. And so, the residents of this coalition continue to urge you to make this a transparent process and provide information on how you plan to comply. On the concrete steps you will take to comply with the Surplus Land Act and with the amendments made by AB 1486, as stated in your letter, I would like to submit this letter for, on behalf of the coalition, in which we ask you to meet with us, I don't know if there's a copy for all of you, in which we ask you to meet with us, as we have in the past, and explain the concrete steps you will take to comply with both the act and the amendments. For example, have you already notified affordable housing developers and open space entities that this land is surplus and that you do plan on parting with it? If you have notified them, who have you notified, and when did you notify them? If you haven't notified them, when do you plan on notifying them? When do you plan on commencing this period? We realize it's, I think, sixty days of notification, as well as ninety days of fair, in good faith negotiations. So when do you plan on doing this? And as always, we just urge you to be transparent throughout this process, because the community there will be greatly impacted by what you decide. And so far, we haven't received any information from the city, barring that letter that was sent to the attorneys in response to the lawsuit being filed. I noticed that you were actually discussing the Willowick lawsuit during your closed session today, and I hope that you were discussing how you plan, like, what steps you plan on taking, and how you plan on informing the community of these steps, and being inclusive of the community, the community's vision, the community needs. So, please reach out to the residents of the coalition. We have made ourselves available. In the letter, we are putting our contact information to please reach out to us, you know, so that we can discuss this and, and keep this a transparent process, and we will be awaiting your response. Thank you.
Nick Dibbs, followed by Khu Tran.
Before you start my five minutes, I've noticed that there's no...
Three and eight, because we got like a hundred cards, yeah.
Okay. Before you start my three minutes...
You're ten seconds in.
Okay.
She, she's doing it on her clock, this timer's broken.
Do I get a warning or something?
No, okay.
On the clock.
Okay.
Two minutes and thirty seconds.
Twenty-five seconds down.
Okay, well, let me start my three minutes. My name is Nicholas Dibbs. My name is Nicholas Dibbs, and I, first off, I want to thank the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association, Maureen Blackman, and the board members, Stephanie, and the board members for having a prayer vigil on Thursday night. There's a lot to pray about, and I have seven citations in the Bible I wanted to read in regard to the prayer vigil, but I'll put, I'll postpone that to the next meeting. Okay. But thank, thank you for having the prayer vigil, Maureen and company. So, I want to speak about seven A, improving, approving that, and the work, community workforce agreement. I've been before this council before, and the, and the school board, saying we need to reinstate the ten woodshops that were cut from all ten intermediate schools. We need to reinstate the four auto shops that were cut from the high schools. When I ran for school board three years ago, I, countless parents and students were telling me they want those woodshops back and those auto shops back. And now the mayor is, has a voice in CTE education, career and technical education. I'm asking you, as the mayor and as the council here, to work with the school district and insist that they bring back our woodshops and our auto shops, improve and increase career and technical education. I, I voiced in agreement with Assemblyman Tom Daley and Congressman Lou Correa, that we need more people trained and get them, we have a shortage of skilled workers. We have a housing crisis in this state. There aren't enough contractors. There aren't enough builders. There aren't enough skilled workers. And part of the problem is, is for too many years, the pendulum has swung, as, as a teacher, I can tell you this, the pendulum has swung too far to everybody going through college, to college. However, please be advised and be aware that there are hundreds and thousands of people out there who have told me, or not just me, but other people, that if it wasn't for woodshop and if it wasn't for auto shop, they would have dropped out of high school. So it's time we bring these things back and have the career pathways tied in at the high school level and also into the apprenticeship programs with the unions. And let's have a, an effort to do this. And so we need the city, the unions, and the school district to sit down, with the, and community members such as myself to sit down. Now, how much time do I have left together? Thirty seconds. Okay.
You can get one Bible verse in.
All right. Okay, so, I've been a teach, I worked in Garden Grove, I worked in Garden Grove Unified for over sixteen years, and, and I'm, I'm speaking from my heart that we need to bring back, approve this agreement, but I'll go, expand it further and tie it into career pathways, making... go expand it further and tie it into career pathways, making, and go beyond just having a meeting and approving this, but having a coalition to build it up. Thank you.
Khu Tran, followed by Dr. Long Pham.
Good evening, Mayor and Garden Grove City Council. I am Khu Tran. Today, I come here to support Lintosyong Ted Parade, Lintosyong Garden Grove Ted Parade. As you know that Vietnamese Ted Parade is a very, very huge event of Vietnamese culture. And Lintosyong Ted Parade will have about 100 units attend, about 5,000 volunteers that are very, very big, very huge event. And if that happened in Garden Grove, you see, we will bring a lot of benefit for Garden Grove City because you know why? 100,000 Vietnamese around the world come here, come to Garden Grove to spend money. Because the Ted Parade, Vietnamese around every state of America and everywhere around the world, they come here to enjoy, to enjoy, you know, Vietnamese culture Ted Parade. So, please vote yes for our community, for Mr. Phat Bu, Chairman of Vietnamese American Federation in Southern California. He had a lot experience to organize Ted Parade. So, please vote, give our community a permit to open that event. Thank you very much.
Dr. Long Pham, followed by Annie Nguyen Choi.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Long Pham. A few, quite a few years ago, I had a privilege to serve, to represent the city of Garden Grove on the Orange County Board of Education. And I'm here today, I'm here this evening, I would like to, well, the older people already tell you, you know, other good reason why you should vote to support the Ted Parade in the city of Garden Grove. As an educator, I'm presenting to you a different reason why we need your vote. Typically, the Ted Parade is the one that we show our culture, the Vietnamese culture. But this year, unfortunately, we don't have that privilege. The older city who had the right to allow some people to have a Ted Parade already give preference to some kind of sex offender. And I repeat, the sex offender and the 9/11 terrorist sympathizer to hold the Ted Parade that we usually have. So, those of us who believe in education value, we believe in the family value, we don't want to stand along with the sex offender who organized the Ted Parade. And we don't want to stand along with the 9/11 terrorist sympathizer. You know, those are the people who was given the privilege to organize the Ted Parade that we usually have. So, we come to you, we are hoping that, you know, you will, you will lend the support so that those of us who are not sex offender, those of us who are not 9/11 terrorist sympathizer, we will have the opportunity, a new opportunity to have a Ted Parade here to show you our culture here in the city of Garden Grove. And from there on, you know, we have a home here rather than going to some city where they force us to stand along with a sex offender and a 9/11 terrorist sympathizer. Thank you so much.
Annie Nguyen Choi, followed by Steve Pho.
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 I'm hungry.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. My name is Annie Choi. I support the Ted Parade. Our communities have organized this event for many years. We do this for celebrating Vietnamese culture and bring joy for all citizens in this area. If we have this event here at this, at the Garden Grove City, Vietnamese Americans will have opportunity to celebrate our traditional and bring more business to the city. Please vote yes. Thank you, thank you for support, our Vietnamese communities. We deeply appreciate your support from the bottom of my heart. Thanks again.
Steve Pho, followed by Maureen Blackman.
My name is Steve Pho. I'm living in city of Garden Grove over 30 years. I say, you know, Garden Grove City have Mr. Phat Bu, he is a great man, very great man. He do a lot of thing for Vietnamese community. And now, I come here to ask the mayor, the council, have Vietnamese community have the Ted Parade in city of Garden Grove. Because, you know, that is very deeply in my heart. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Maureen, you're about to clean up.
Yay. I did that all weekend. Anyway. First, let me say this three minutes is great. People get right to their point. Keeps meeting moving. Second thing is, is I have seen more near misses with pedestrians and vehicles because nobody has reflective gear on, so could somebody please, I almost saw a family get wiped out. I almost saw somebody on the way here and so I thought, please, people put something reflective on. Time has changed, maybe you're going at the same time, but it's dark and these eyes don't always see that well. Anyway, 6A, I'd love to see a bike path and a pedestrian. I'd also love to see the plan for the security and the maintenance. Police and public works will be needed to keep this path safe, so could you please make sure that we have the funding to take care of it? The Vietnam War has been on the backdrop of my life. I didn't understand the Vietnam War and it was played on multiple levels. Everyone claimed to be doing things for the right reasons. Same with this parade. I didn't understand the war and I'm sorry to say I don't understand many of the issues that face our Vietnamese community in our city. I respect the culture, but I don't profess to understand the impact. A yes vote on this issue would be on the community. I will say this, I would never support an event that's going to take money out of the city budget. The city residents voted for a sales tax for police and protection, not parties and parades. I voiced this concern to the leaders of this parade and was told all of the funding would be paid in advance to the city for this event. With money not being a factor and not knowing all the implications, a yes vote on this parade. I sought out advice from my friends that I respect in the Vietnamese community. The answers that I received would be, what would be wrong with another parade? I have to respect the opinions of those who I know and trust. If they support it, how would I be one to not support it? I'm glad it's your decision and not mine. Thank you.
I yield my time.
Thank you, everyone. That concludes oral communications. We're going to take about a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
We're going on to written communications, item two A.
Two A, I like six A.
Item two A is a consideration of a written request from the TTCS and VA FSC to organize a TED parade in Garden Grove on January 26, 2020. Mr. Montanez is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, the Community Services Department is transmitting a written request from the nonprofit group Assembly of the Republic of Vietnam Veterans Association Overseas and the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California, requesting approval to host a 2020 TED parade in three proposed routes within the city of Garden Grove. The proposed date for the parade is Sunday, January 26, 2020. The three proposed routes are as followed. Garden Grove Boulevard, which will be, the parade route would be from Nutwood Street to Euclid, but would require a closure from Garden Grove Boulevard, on Garden Grove Boulevard, from Brookhurst Street to Euclid Street. The second proposal is on Westminster Avenue, in which the parade route would be from Brookhurst Street to Taft Street, but would require a closure from Brookhurst Street to Euclid Street. And the third proposal is on Euclid Street, that this parade would be just north of Lamson Avenue to Garden Grove Boulevard. The Euclid Street closure would be from Chapman to Garden Grove Boulevard. At this time, staff would like to request City Council's direction on how to proceed with the proposed parade. This request would require staff hours to be dedicated to gather additional information, determine the overall costs for staffing and resources, and review a set of approved traffic plans, and draft a formal agreement between the city and organizers to be approved by City Council at a future meeting date. Additionally, staff will need to verify that all residents affected by the route have been notified and that local businesses and churches on the route have been given their approval. Lastly, the organizers have requested that two skydivers land at open field sites nearby the proposed routes. This request will require approval by the Federal Aviation Administration and the Garden Grove Unified School District and/or the city. Although a complete financial impact has not been determined until the route is approved, the organizer has proposed reimbursing the city for all costs incurred in providing support for the parade. I would like to note that the organization, Assembly of the Republic of Vietnam Veterans Association Overseas, is a local 501(c)(3) nonprofit in good standing with the Secretary of State's office and the Internal Revenue Services. It is requested that the City Council review the proposed TED parade event, and if approved, give staff direction on which route or routes to proceed with. This concludes my report. Police Chief Tom DeRae and myself are here to answer any questions and/or recommendations regarding the routes and the community impact. I'm also aware that Mr. Ken Do, Director of Programming for the TED Parade Committee, is here to answer questions and make a presentation.
Thank you, John. Quick, any questions of staff first before we proceed?
Okay, please go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers, also city staff. This is my second time being here. The first time was a couple of years ago when we have a, now we're being here to support the divisions of City of Garden Grove into Sixth District, and now we see all the faces here after that incident. And at that time, I was living in District Five, actually still now, and yes, today's, I'm wearing a different hat. Just on behalf of the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California to present to you the TED Parade 2020, and I believe I have the control. Thank you so much. I'm gonna have some slideshow. Should I just hit? Is that right there or there? Oh, okay. Oh, okay. So, gotta go backward. All right. So, the proposal for the City of Garden Grove by the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California and the Assemblies of Republics of Vietnam Veterans Associations Overseas, yes, and we do have a file one C, we'll submit it to the city. This year, I would like to share with you and especially the Garden Grove residents about the TED Parade and what makes it special. TED, it simply means Lunar New Year, but in Vietnamese, TED, and it's become very popular, as you know, right now, as everybody know about TED. We just consider it's a very traditional event for the Vietnamese regardless where they lived. And over a million people is around the world. TED Parade is an iconic Lunar New Year tradition for the past 20 years, a start in the city of Westminster, and up to the time that City have no fund to support for the parade. The TED Parade in the past seven years has been expanded and also has been organized by the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California. In the past seven years, we've been taking care financially, and in the past three years, I have seen that the TED Parade has been expanded to be not just for the Vietnamese community, but we have seen the Koreans, community Hispanics, and Native American, Napol have joining the parade. It makes everybody excited because we see that it's not just become these simple events of the Vietnamese community, but it's just for the whole community in the Southern California. And TED Parade, as again, is a community event for all people in Southern California and around the world. Why around the world? I will show it to you later on statistically. And TED Parade only happened in heart of Little Saigon. Even in Vietnam, there's no such TED Parade, and that's what's special about TED Parade. And the history of TED Parade was established in the early 2000, as I mentioned earlier, and in 2013, the Federation of the Vietnamese Veterans Association became the organizer. Since then, in the past seven years, even since we start during the time of 2013, when the city of Westminster give a notice to the community to say that, okay, we can no longer sponsor for the events financially, in just six week, the Vietnamese American Federation of Southern California was able to raise $80,000 to pay for the city. And we have done that since then, that we pay upfront. About one month before the events took place, we deposited about $65,000 to the city and paid the rest, because at that time, it was just the estimate, and we were able to come up a week, two weeks later to pay for the rest of the balance. And as you see on the screen, several checks, cashier check has been submitted to the city. And up to this point, we have not owed even a penny. And the taxpayer of the city have not even paid a penny to the events. So, for those concerned, the financial support, there will be zero from the city. It will pay throughout the fundraising events, and I see all of some familiar face that you being at the fundraising events, that we were able to raise about forty, fifty thousand dollars throughout the night. And statistically, in 2016, when I become the program director, I have suggested to the community that we should have some professional social network that can be involved and give us statistic, a number of how many people joining us, how many people watching us throughout the world. And this is through the company that provided us the statistic in 2016. At that time, we have 109 units joining the parade, 14 floats, and people who attend as participants of the parade was about 6,000 people, and around 20,000 people standing along the route. We have about 13.4 million live video Twitter impressions at that time. People throughout the world, even living in Europe, in Australia, everywhere, they were excited to see it, because again, this is the one and only event took place during the Lunar New Year, not even happening in Vietnam. So, that's what the number we have. And since 2016 to 2019, the Vietnamese American Federation in Southern California and the Vietnamese Veterans Association have been working hand in hand to make it happen besides of many other community association been supporting us. And we have the theme for this year. The theme for this year is the power of unity. Especially this year, 2020, it's marked the 45 years of the Vietnamese political refugees arrived in America. It's a must event that we feel we need. It's our responsibility to have the parade taking place. And the start time start at nine o'clock in the morning to 12 on Saturday, January 26, 2020. It's the second day of Lunar New Year. As you know, before, we have the TED Festival in City of Garden Grove, and sometime, a couple of years ago, also we have it again, because at that time, people live in the United States, not locally, take the vacation time and being here with their family. It's a tradition for the sons and daughters and childrens to be able to come and being with their parents during the new year, the Lunar New Year, for people gather together to celebrate regardless where they live. That's the time that people take time, days off to be with their family. It's just like Thanksgiving. It's just like Christmas. And the Vietnamese, we not just to bring the cultures to United States, we want to maintain, preserve it. We have Thanksgiving here for family being together, and in Vietnam, we have the new year, that we being together. That's the day and time. And because of that, people cannot extend their vacation and stay for the whole week, you know, but just taking place during the first three days of the new year. And we want to take that opportunity to have people enjoy, enhance the feeling to welcome the new year by having a TED Parade. That's the whole purpose at the very beginning of the TED Parade. And where we have three route, the Garden Grove Boulevard from Nutwood going east to Euclid, and we can turn into the past Steel Craft and going toward the park. The second route that we propose is gonna be on Westminster Boulevard from Taft to Brookhurst, not from Brookhurst to Taft as the original proposal, because we're going west from Taft, so we can stop on, actually before Brookhurst, it's right there. And the third proposal would be Euclid going south from Lamson to Garden Grove Boulevard. That's the three proposal we have. As I live on Chapman and Euclid, every year during the month of September, I receive a letter from the city that, okay, this street gonna be closed during the fest, Strawberry Festival. Have no problem with that, you know, because you know, it's only take, you know, once a year and everybody celebrated, and I enjoy to be there as well. Yeah. And now, highlight about the TED Parade, 5,000 people in 80 parade units, including floats, high school matching bands, and as you heard earlier, six high school from Anaheim took time to be there. They start doing fundraising so they can be part of the events. And also, we have federal, state, local elected officers. I see all of you were there. It's not new. We have Unified School District, martial arts school, community association, US military and cadet, Vietnamese, Vietnam War veterans, Hispanic, Korean, Native American, Native Indians, and local business and others. Actually, there's time that we have over hundreds of units register, but we try to bring down within the time limits. So, that's why we encourage people to go in group, a bigger group instead of like stretching it out. So, we have about ideally 80 units, but there were time 2016, up to 106, it took so long, we had to pay for the extra time to the city, and we didn't want it happen again. And 15,000 to 20,000 viewers along parade route with 40 millions viewers on network local TV being promoted with the Vietnamese local TVs, put on YouTube, people seeing it. And during the opening ceremony, we have the skydiver with US and former South Vietnam flags, and also excited to hear the traditional fire crackers during the ceremony to start the events. Little Saigon TED Parade, it just does not limit in the city of Westminster. We're being called Little Saigon, including Garden Grove, where we have the largest Vietnamese population in the city of Garden Grove with six district. It's not about divide, indeed, it's unity. Bring everybody together. And when you want to preserve a culture and share the beauty of that culture, there's no competitions, there's no divide or conflict of interest. We want everybody to have a good time, a great time, being together. It doesn't have to be taking place in one day, it could be a second day, that today I'm busy with family, tomorrow I go to the TED Parade. Tomorrow I'm busy than today, I go to TED Parade in Westminster. We encourage people to join us, just like they do go to the TED Festival, either in Costa Mesa or in Maysu Park or even in Garden Grove. And it's always pack and full, right? Because it's a family being together who would say no to the fun and the great time being together for the very meaningful day of the year, the new year, the Lunar New Year. So, I urge you to support for this event. I thank you so much for your time. And in conclusion, again, for those concerned financially, no burden to all of you financially, we pay for all the cost. And especially if we go on the route on Garden Grove, I can see that time, the former markets taking place in Main Street, what people gonna do by the end of the parade, noon time, they're gonna go to the marketplace, they're gonna go to Steel Craft to have lunch, and that's how they bring business to local business owners. I don't see people gonna go home being hungry, right? So, they are gonna stop by, they're gonna stop by and buy something to eat, especially with their kids. They're gonna come to McDonald, where the happiest place in, you know, on earth, right? And kids gonna say, my kids say, Dad, McDonald, every time we pass by. So, we, on that route, we see a lot of business that would be able to take advantage of this event to bring more customer. I don't see people gonna turn their back and, you know, and go home. And Garden Grove has the highest concentration of Vietnamese American and Vietnamese business in Southern California. As Little Saigon expand, Garden Grove has become a pivotal focus. So, for this reason and many others, we sincerely hope Mr. Mayor Steve Jones, our council member, George Birdegens, John O'Neil, Tu Hau Nguyen, Fat Boy, Stephanie Calvinstan, and Tim Nguyen to suggest the support for this event. Thank you so much for your support. We do have a video, but I think that's, you wanna see some video in the past?
You guys.
You were there, right?
I think we're fine.
So, you knew how fun it was, you know?
Yeah, we've all been there.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Let's keep this moving along. Any questions of the?
Any questions?
Presenter? No, okay, you may be seated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Colleagues?
Yeah, you know, some things that come to mind, and honestly,
Yeah, you know, some things that come to mind, and honestly, you know, you can't help but to have that backdrop of the political division going on in Westminster right now, and that really kind of highlights a lot of things. You know, in my decision making, though, what I try to do is just take the politics out of it as best as you can and say, well, what's best for the community? I know we don't want to bring that Westminster stuff here, and I think that's the best way of looking at it. What's the best thing to do for our community without any of the political drama and stuff? You have a, any group that comes before this body and wants to put on an event and pick up the entire cost of the event of a public community, you know, a positive community event, they want to pick up the entire cost and hold it in our city. Why would you, why would you say no? How could you say no? I mean, they're, take the politics out of it. You know, it is what it is. They're picking up the cost, it's a positive event for the entire community. I look at things, yesterday, we had Veterans Day. There was parades in Santa Ana, Long Beach, Los Angeles, multiple cities celebrating the same thing. St. Patrick's Day, same thing. Boston, Los Angeles, Chicago, New York, there's all parties, they're all celebrating the same thing. It's not a division thing, it's a unity thing. To say that just because multiple cities are celebrating the same thing is divisive, I think that's hogwash.
Yep.
Because actually, it supports unity, and that's the theme of the event. So personally, I would like to do it with the least amount of disruption to the businesses in our city as possible. So I do like the second route best, because I think that causes less issues to the city. But, you know, I'm in support of holding the fest, the parade here in Garden Grove for 2020.
Hallelujah. Well, to answer your concern, we've been having a plan... Oh, do I suppose to answer that, or just...
Why don't you go ahead, why don't you go ahead?
Oh, okay, I'm done.
We'll call you back up if we need you anymore, but I think it's...
Oh, okay. Because I have the answer for that, so...
Yeah, sorry about that. It's not really a public hearing, so we allowed you to do the presentation, but now it's just council deliberating amongst ourselves unless we need to reach out.
[inaudible].
However you like, go ahead, John, if you're ready to go.
Okay, so I would concur with Councilman George Bridigum that, yeah, it's a community thing, take the politics out of it. I'm all in favor, I think the consensus is going to be to move forward. I don't know if we'll decide on a route tonight, I'd like to direct staff to, you know, when we're all done speaking up here, is to direct staff on what would be the best route as far as the business owners, homeowners, and also the safety of the route. But I'm all in favor of it.
I guess it's my turn. Well, at the beginning, I was opposed where we are having the same day, you know, same times. I definitely opposed to that, because that is definitely causing a division in the community. So I think the organizing committee to change the date. I think that's a good move. At the same time, this is, no matter how many TED Parade or, you know, in the community, it's a celebration of the New Year, it's a celebration of TED. So I am okay with, you know, concurring to move forward with this. But at the same time, we want to make sure that we're not, you know, designated all our personnel, we have to look at the logistic, especially which route the best, that's not affecting our resources, especially all the, you know, all the police officers, all the public will have to designate it for the areas. So we want to, I'm going to depend on John and the chief to advise us, what is the best route. But at the same time, in my mind, I think the second route would be the best option, because it's avoiding all the businesses without interruptions, and it's, you know, that in my opinion. But of course, we're going to depend on your expertise of where to look at, give us some more ideas so that we can move it forward. So anyway, that's what I might say. Thank you.
Sure, I'll talk about the route. So I looked at this and presented all three options to my traffic personnel. And we took in the account of community impact in regards to this, as well as the staffing issues that's going to have a burden on to the police department. And when we looked at it, we looked at options one and three, and we figured that that had a huge impact on the surrounding community. The, that area already in May has the impact of the Strawberry Festival, which causes many closures. We will end up closing, and there will be no access to the Kaiser Hospital on Euclid. So Euclid will be shut down at Chapman. There is no shutting it down at Lamson, it's Chapman. So you would have that issue. On option three, which was Garden Grove Boulevard, that would take the most staffing. If we were to go across Euclid, would be an absolute mess to shut down Euclid at that point. Would run me about 85 officers to do that, which I don't have to work that event. So we looked at option number two. Option number two had the least impact on the community. We could do that with the amount of officers that we have available, and really would have the least amount of traffic or impact on traffic along Brookhurst or Euclid. So we would support option number two of these three on Westminster. The only thing we were looking at, I know the presentation went on, the only question that I would have in regards to that, when we looked at this, it started at Brookhurst and went eastbound to Taft. I believe the presentation had it flipped. I just want to make sure that that's not an issue, because it could cause some issues with our planning. One of the things I'd also like to make sure we get ironclad is that all the financial costs are paid for upfront, and should they not be met, the event will be canceled. There should be no money out of public funds for this whatsoever. I think we probably, I see everybody shaking their head, I think we all kind of agree on that. So that should be codified too in this agreement.
I just want to add to that. Since we already just passed the budget for two years' budget, I don't think we have any room to wiggle for additional at the moment.
Prepay, prepay.
Any other fine points or comments, or George, would you like to make a motion?
I'll move approval. And in the planning, I guess, right? Would that be appropriate? To direct staff to start the planning process.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor, before we go down...
I'm planning on route number two.
Yeah, so I just want to be crystal clear when we leave tonight, because time is of the essence. We have, I'm sure the parade organizers have a lot of work to do between now and then to make sure it's a great parade. So I want to make sure that what we will, what we will do is work with the organizers on route number two. I hear some confusion about whether we're thinking of it going east or if it's going west. Can we get some...
When we get the proposal, back up here.
They said west. Yeah, can we get some clarification on that?
Yeah, I have several questions. Several quick, specific questions. One is her...
Sure, originally, we want to go west to east, from Brookhurst to Taft. But I was thinking, and we were thinking, that if we start from Taft, people are going to end up on Brookhurst where a lot of supermarkets right there, so people can go there. So it's more enhancing for the business instead of ending the route on Taft. It has nothing, you know, so that's what we, again, we want to encourage people to go into the supermarket, we go to the restaurants on Brookhurst and Westminster, so they can have lunch at the end of the parade. It makes more sense for that. If staff feel that that is not feasible, will you be okay going from west to east, from Brookhurst to Taft? Shouldn't be a problem. Shouldn't be a problem, yeah. Shouldn't be a problem, we go from Brookhurst to Taft. No problem, yeah, either way. Yes, yes.
I have two questions. Tuho has a question.
Well, since you already answered the question, but just because in my head, the logistic, because if you go to Taft to Brookhurst, where, what area are you going to break down? Because it's all going to be shopping centers, you, all the float cannot have any place to break down.
Well, the end of the route is going to, they're going to pass Brookhurst to, no, the Brookhurst is going to be blocked, right? Westminster end by Brookhurst. So it's end right there, they're going to go to Hua Bin Supermarket, to Bank of America, the huge parking lot right there.
Yeah, if all the float end up in there, I don't think you have enough space to break down.
Before, in Westminster, we have it, we didn't even have anything. We ends up going to the small parking lot on Bouchard and Bishop, that's a small parking lot. But I believe the parking lot for Hua Bin Supermarkets is huge, even bigger than that. So people are going to, the flow is going to go in there.
I will let the chief and John would look at that area, because...
Yeah, I would suggest that to let staff work that out with the organizer.
Yeah, the simple question is, would you be in agreement with going either east or west?
We totally agree. We would totally agree with that.
Not tonight, but after a discussion with staff about the logistics and the details. So that's one question. I have another question. Did you clearly understand Councilmember Bridigum's condition about full cost recovery and being paid upfront in advance? So whatever the estimate of the city's full cost recovery would be paid 100% in advance?
I believe that was my original proposal. If we don't come up with the money, no event's going to take place on that day.
Okay, great.
We make ourselves clear.
And if you're given the approval, what's your, how strongly do you feel you're going to be able to pull this off successfully in several months from now?
I'm not just going to say 100%, but I'm going to say 101%. Because we have strong supporters, and we have fundraising events. It's a hard proof, in the past seven years, every year, we have singers to come and join us. We have fundraising events throughout the auctions, people, business owner donating money, and even we have, before, sometime, the fundraising took place after the due date for the deposit. We do have people who came up with the money in advance to loan us the money. And I was one of them, I remember.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. You may be seated.
So I'll amend the motion then. Plan two, paid in advance, or no parade. I don't want staff coming back to us saying, oh, they didn't pay us, and we had the parade anyway. Make sure the money is in hand, and that staff work with the proponent to make it happen.
Right, call the vote. We'll move on to item 2B.
Item 2B is consideration of a written request to waive fees for the use of Atlanta's Play Center for the OC Autism Christmas Event on Saturday, December 14, 2019. Mr. Montanes is here to give the report.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Janet Pallio is actually here to do the report this evening. Johnson. The Orange County Autism Organization is requesting city council approval for cosponsorship of their annual Christmas event held at Atlanta's Play Center on Saturday, December 14, 2019. The organization is a tax exempt nonprofit, 501(c)(3), that provides assistance to children and adults with disabilities, both locally and globally. Staff has verified that the organization is in good standing with the California Secretary of State Office and the Internal Revenue Service. OC Autism's Christmas event invites 500 families with autism and special needs to enjoy a free event that includes food, pictures with Santa, toy giveaway, and much more. A significant percentage of the attendees are Garden Grove families. OC Autism's Christmas event, the cosponsorship request includes waiving the exclusive use fee for rental of Atlanta's Play Center. The fee is $920 for an eight-hour time slot, which also includes the cost for staff. The organization has committed to pay 5% of the total fee, a total amount of $46. Thereby, the total amount waived would be a total of $874. Staff recommends that the city council consider the request to waive fees for this annual Christmas event hosted by the Orange County Autism Group. And staff and a representative from the organization are available to answer any questions you may have. That concludes my report.
Any questions, staff?
Move to approve?
Yeah, second. Well, actually, I...
Discussion?
Discussion item. I don't think, I mean, this is OC Autism. They put on this wonder event, wonderful event, why are we charging them 5%? I mean, honestly, if we're going to waive the cost, let's waive the cost and do this right, and waive the whole cost, including the 5%.
I agree.
Yeah, let me just chime in then in general. I would agree with that in general. We came up with that a few years ago when we were in the sort of budget crunch crisis, and all departments were cutting their budgets by 5%. I think that came out of that era. And so to me, it's sort of just petty and trivial to charge them 46 dollars for a thing. So I'd like to stop putting that into any future reports personally, and just sort of, and get rid of that 5% thing, and just sort of contemplate on the merits of the event, whether we contribute the space.
I think we no longer facing that financial crunch, so the 5% across the board no longer require.
It has never been well received by any of the wonderful nonprofit groups that come up in front of us and say, I got a what? I got to pay...
So my motion would be basically, my secondary motion, I guess, would be to waive the entire cost of the event.
Thank you.
So that would be the Antonette motion then?
That was a motion.
He amended his motion. Did you make it?
Well, she made a motion, she seconded it, and I made a secondary motion, so it needs a second.
Second again, second.
I second it.
You have three seconds.
Okay, good.
Call the vote. Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Thank you. We're going to recess to successor agency.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can just follow up on that. Obviously, the reason we did it was at the direction of council some time ago, to do that for all reports. So the understanding that the staff has going forward is, we will no longer follow the 5% rule going forward.
Please.
Thank you.
So successor agency. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Bridigum?
Here.
Member O'Neil?
Here.
Member Tuho Nguyen?
Here.
Member Calvinstan?
Here.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Buoy?
Yeah.
And Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communication simultaneously with city council, we just have two consent items, it's receive and follow the minutes, and receive and follow the warrants. Do I have a motion?
I move motion.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. That takes us on to consent items. It's recommended, we've already taken 3A, so it's recommended that 3B through 3I be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any polls?
Move to approve?
Second.
Call the vote.
We still got a lot...
Motion received, seven yes votes.
We're even halfway done.
Okay, that takes us on to item four, public hearings. We do have one. Second reading.
Item 4A is a public hearing, and this is to conduct the public hearing and the second reading of ordinance number 2910, which is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Amending Title 18 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code and Adopting by Reference the Following Primary Codes with Certain Amendments, Deletions, and Additions thereto. California Building Code 2019 Edition, California Residential Code 2019 Edition, California Electrical Code 2019 Edition, California Mechanical Code 2019 Edition, California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition, California Energy Code 2019 Edition, California Historical Building Code 2019 Edition, California Fire Code 2019 Edition, California Existing... Code 2019 Edition, California Fire Code 2019 Edition, California Existing Building Code 2019 Edition, California Green Building Standards Code 2019 Edition, California Referenced Standards Code 2019 Edition, and certain secondary codes, including the International Property Maintenance Code 2018 Edition, as published by the International Code Council, and the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code 2018 Edition, as published by the International Code Council.
You need to take a bow.
Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this item?
I'd like to have a motion for turn read it again. That was awesome. Thank you.
Sure, please come up.
On behalf of OC Autism and our families affected by autism and children with disability, I want to thank the City Council for allowing us to continue to, to host our events in Garden Grove. OC Autism was founded in Garden Grove and over 10 years ago, and every single one of our event has been hosted here. And so this especially is our 10th year anniversary, and I would like to invite, you know, the whole City Council to come and all the families who are affected by autism and, and, you know, city staff who, who would like to learn more and partner up with us to, to continue this tradition. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Close, close public hearing. We'll close the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now I move.
Call the vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
5A commission committee matters. We do have an appointment to fill a vacancy on Traffic Commission. I would like to nominate Yasmin Vasquez.
I second.
Other comments, questions, or call the vote? Thank you.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration, item 6A.
No, Craig.
Item 6A is award a contract to Los Angeles Engineering, Inc. for the construction of project number 7281 Bicycle and Pedestrian Trail on the Orange County Transportation Authority, OCTA, right-of-way from Stanford Avenue to Booker Street. And Mr. Murray is here to give the report.
Thank you, Ms. Palmeroy, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, council is being asked to award a contract to Los Angeles Engineering for the construction of a bike and walking path in the Orange County Transportation Authority right-of-way from Stanford Avenue to Booker Street and appropriate an additional $728,000 to fund the construction. I have a location map for your use, should have all been handed out, and we should be able to display that. I don't know if we actually got it hooked up on the computer to display it to the, it's not the workforce agreement.
It's part of it.
Hmm, hmm, no, it's not. It went away. No, it's not here. That's all right.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have a printout of it.
Okay. Everybody, it should, it's, it's basically the old PE right-of-way that cuts across the city. And the existing portion of it is from Nelson to Stanford. And we're also planning an extension in the future from Brookhurst to Chapman and possibly future. We'll see how that goes. The 12-foot-wide bike path will be constructed using asphalt concrete, and the 8-foot-wide pedestrian path will, will use decomposed granite. Both paths are 70, or 3725 feet long, which is almost 3/4 of a mile. The path will have trail lighting and will include improvements to each of the street crossings. The streets will be narrowed at the bike and ped crossings and signed and striped to improve safety. Brookhurst will have a signalized crossing for the path and will not be narrowed. The bulk of the project will be constructed in the OCTA right-of-way. And however, staff does expect some traffic delays caused from the narrowing at the crossings in the, in the public streets. And that's basically to allow for the closure of some, the outside traffic lanes or basically an entire traffic lane to do that, facilitate that work. All of this work is planned to be done at a cost of just over $1.9 million. Staff received an open for bids on September 26th of this year and determined that Los Angeles Engineering was the lowest responsible bidder. This project was included in this year's capital improvement plan, but exceeded the estimated budget by the aforementioned $728,000. As such, the project will be paid for with the original $1.5 million in federal grants, and staff is asking for $400,000 of park fees and $328,000 in AQMD funds to be allocated to this project. Should council decide to award and allocate the funds tonight, the contractor can begin work in January and should be complete by summer of next year. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Questions of staff?
I have a couple. The, the money, so where exactly is this fund of money, whereas in the 780,000, is it, or?
There are park fees that we collect generally from developments. They pay into any sort of a, you know, they pay park fees when you do a development in the city. And we collect those fees and gather them in that park fee account. Those fees are to pay for capital improvements in the parks. You know, a lot of them go to, like, funding, this entire improvement here, we use park fees. If we were to put in a new feature or something, like a skate facility or something, it would use park fees. And conceivably, someday, we would actually improve the irrigation in the parks, and we would use park fees. The other money is from the AQMD account, and that goes, is funding that's, I don't know exactly where it's collected from, but we actually put it in that account to address our carpooling issues and our requirements that are owed to the Air Quality Management District for an organization of this size.
Thank you. I don't know if you guys have any more questions. I have comment after, but...
I have a couple of questions. So maybe it's more, Bill can let me know. So my, my biggest, I'm all in favor of this, but my concern is obviously crossing the main thoroughfares and then safety along the route at, at those major streets for pedestrians. There's, it's gonna be striped for a crosswalk or to go from, across the right-of-way?
Yes, there'll be a striping and push-button, ped crossings.
Perfect.
And then going across Brookhurst will actually have a, a full signal that will flash and will allow for crossing there.
Any safety along the route? Maybe in the, so we got solar lighting, but maybe there could be a panic button if there was any issues half, because some of those routes in between Lamson and Brookhurst, it's a pretty long route there, you know? There'd be some sort of, you know, the parking structures at colleges, you have a blue light, and you got a, a security button where, you know, something happens. So that's a thought. But then also had a question about, along the right-of-way, there are some areas, especially over here near Stanford, that businesses have leased the space. Are those going away or are they just retracting back to get away from the path or?
Staff is working with them to relocate their facilities and, and provide enough room to get this, this through, to get this construction through.
All right, that's all I have, thanks. Questions?
My, my comment, I mean, I, I look at this and, and I just, it just, the word boondoggle comes out, out of mind here. It's a $2 million bike path to nowhere that's gonna be used by less than 1/10th of 1% of the population of Garden Grove. It's gonna end up being a homeless encampment mecca. We've got homes that border that, that's gonna be free rein to their backyards, to these people's homes. I think this is, this decision to go down this path is a terrible decision. I don't see anything positive about it at all. It's a lot of money for a very few minor amount of people who would use this, and we would be relocating, reallocating funds from our parks who really need the money. We just got the park report. We need to come up with a lot of money to get that done, and now we're gonna take that money and put it on this boondoggle? I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous. The amount of people who ride bikes in this community are, is this Garden Grove. We don't have a lot of bike riders. I mean, it is what it is. So that's my thoughts. I think we should prioritize the matter to our parks and not to this nonsense. And that's my thoughts.
How do you really feel?
I, I had the, I had the same concern because of the safety, and I inquired about it, and we, I was told that that right-of-way would be treated as, as kind of a park where at 10:00 PM, there's no transient population in there, there's nobody, the police can actually, you know, enforce a curfew from 10:00, 10:00 PM, I believe, to, just like our parks. What is our current curfew in our parks, Bill?
10:00 PM.
And what time does it open?
It, it's basically dusk to dawn.
Dusk to dawn, okay, so, okay, 10:00 PM until dawn?
When we had turned the lights on, it goes to 10.
Okay.
Can't even keep the homeless out of our bathrooms in our parks, you know? I mean, East Gate Park just got totally vandalized a couple of weeks ago. I mean, it, it is what it is, but...
Well, my question is, are there homeless encampments meccas there now?
Right.
Yes.
Where?
We just cleared one out and took all the brush out right at Brookhurst and the OCTA right-of-way. That was due to a fire that was started by the homeless in the brush. We envisioned the brush carrying the flyer up to the tree line and then extending over into the rear property of residents off of Bonzer Avenue that had trees. So we decided just to go ahead and rip out all of the shrubbery there to prevent the fires, you know? Lord knows, I, they were probably cooking there. I, I don't know exactly what they were doing there, but we wanted to, to reduce that, that type of an event.
My, I just have, you know, once we have this, I mean, this is a positive thing. Councilmember George, we don't have a lot of biker because we don't have land to ride, but now we do, so we probably, I have a bike, so I'm ready to bike. However, we should, I should have to look at the, how we can patrol and make sure this area is safe, especially to avoid any encampment by the homeless transient. So maybe this, once the project get going, we should look into what can we do, right? Constant patrolling or just, just something that keep the path safe and, you know, secure for the biker or for the, for the residents.
Understood.
This is in my district, and yes, there is a lot of homeless issue over there. There's, I, I receive over the years quite a few phone call about homeless issue in there. I'm so glad that our, you know, police officer have really take good care in prevent that from, you know, prolonged encampment. But I do not know whether a lot of people will use this bike path or not. Maybe there will, maybe there will not. I'm not the biker guy, so it won't benefit me that much, but I, I believe that, and $2 million is a lot of money, right? But I think, you know, having, doing something in that area to turn it into some, some bike path, as well as some potential improvement for possible use and create that as a, a park with a lot of light to light up the area will help, probably will, will help some, address some homeless issue encampment there. So I, I would tend to support it, but, but I do want, you know, you to assure us that there will be sufficient lining there.
I cannot make that assurance.
Huh?
I will not make that assurance.
So what $2 million will bring us?
You will get trail lighting, which is the, it's the shorter lighting.
Just, just the concrete or?
No, we'll get, we're gonna get, for this particular grant, there isn't a following grant, by the way, that I can talk about, and I will. It will get you the asphalt bike path, the pedestrian walking path, and trail lighting. And that's the shorter height lights.
What do you mean by trail lining? I'm, I'm not an expert.
What I mean is, it's the shorter height lights, so that you can walk along the trail, yeah, like a Ballard light.
Like about three feet tall, maybe?
Shorter height light.
Okay.
The other part of the grant is, we're looking to get a grant for 364 trees, and some irrigation will be included with that to place along the, the bike path, in between the path and the homes to the north side.
So, but, but only between the segment number, is that for the entire segment or just for the?
It's for the, for the segment that we're working on right now.
So $2 million, it's just for that one segment?
That is, that is correct.
If we do the remaining, how much will it cost?
Well, we'll have to estimate it at the time of construction. This original estimate for the bike path was done about two or three years ago by our consultant. And they use prices at that particular point in time. The construction industry is somewhat booming because of our economy right now, and prices are going up pretty high.
Bill, if I look at this, this is really, I thought this is for the entitlement, but entire segment, but we just do a small piece first. But if I look at that, the blue, the blue segment from Nelson to Stanford look like it is 1/4 of the red line and probably 1/3 of the green line.
Nelson and Stanford is already complete. That is the existing section.
This is the remainder, so this goes all the way to Brookhurst.
This is, oh, so this is from, this is the red one?
It is the whole.
The whole color.
Oh, the whole color thing?
The whole thing.
Well, not to Chapman.
So that's, that's why I'm asking you, but I was confused.
Not the green.
Not the green, just the red one?
Right.
Okay. That make more sense. Otherwise, you scare me and I about to vote no on it. Okay. $2 million, $2 million for the red one?
That's correct. $2 million, homeless housing, that's what we'll call it.
Well, but some people, this project, we already approved the concept last year, right?
It was actually a few years ago.
Three years ago? And then now we have the funding from, you know, other grants, with a little bit of money from park use, about $300,000?
It's 400 from parks.
400,000, I think.
I thought it was 400 from AQMD.
Yeah. Anyway, I...
400 from parks. If I'm reading the report.
It's not using the general fund, so I, I'm not very concerned, but it's, it's from the grants. I hope that we would probably use it for something better, but this is something that, that the council have approved prior, so I have no, I think I would just approve it today.
I'd like to reclaim my time, because I asked a question, then Tuho jumped in and then that, and I didn't really get to finish what I was saying, so I'm reclaiming my time. So, I mean, this is a, what else would we do with it? And yes, I understand there might be a huge homelessness issue, an encampment that may come, may or may not come, I don't know. But you know what? Maybe that'll light a fire under our tushes to really get on and solve this homelessness problem in Garden Grove. I, I'm concerned because I, I don't feel the enthusiasm coming from this side of the room, so I don't know where, where we are with it. I wasn't anticipating it to be on this agenda council meeting until I saw the, the agenda packet, so I wasn't really prepared to see the negative outcome of this. It seems like a very positive thing.
Yeah.
And that's false. People do bike in Garden Grove, but they're scared of dying, so they typically try not to. And the other thing is, we have had multiple residents come and talk about this on the dais. This isn't something that we just decided to do. There was a reason why. And I've had residents reach out to me personally, asking about bike paths and pedestrian walk away, and right-of-ways and different projects. If this is an opportunity to have green space in Garden Grove and for us to utilize to host events, to do something unique, I mean, we're, we're running out of space. I'm fighting to get my district's one park revamped, and I don't, I mean, I don't know, we're still waiting to hear back for the grant. So this is, we were awarded money with all grants, most of the time you have to put money in to get money out. So I'd like to hear from my mayor, because I know that this is his big baby, so I, before I decide where I'm at with it, I'd, I'd love to hear his thoughts.
Go, Mayor. Thank you. So yes, this has been part of a longstanding vision of mine that I'm very passionate about. So I think from a placemaking standpoint, something magical... So, I think from a placemaking standpoint, something magical happens when you get people out of their cars and onto the streets via, as pedestrians, as cyclists, as whatnot, and you connect our city. Several years ago, Aaron Webb, who has now retired and moved on, wrote a beautiful package for our bicycle and pedestrian master plan throughout the whole city called Pedals and Feet. And that was sort of a preamble to receiving funding. We've got almost $1.5 million funding grant that we're taking advantage of here to do this. So, you know, we have money to do this. We're supplementing it a little bit with our parks and AQMD fees, which are sort of specifically targeted for this type of thing. Anyways, we currently have a condition that's 100 feet wide by the entire city long of blight, of straight up blight, with coyote dens, with homeless encampments. Why? Because they're fenced off on both ends. There's overgrowth. You can't see. There's no visibility. That's what creates those conditions. Of course, that's where the homeless are going to go. Of course, that's where the coyotes are going to hang out because nobody goes back there. You're not allowed to, right? It's just no man's land. When you open these things up, you add landscaping, you add lighting, you have people movement on it. It resolves those conditions. So, it's a natural impediment to encampments and to bad behavior and that sort of thing. Furthermore, it connects the city in a whole new way. The intersection of Brookhurst and Chapman becomes very accessible to downtown. It helps kids get to school and back in a safe manner by, so it's a safe routes to school mechanism that's strongly supported by that whole coalition as well. And like I said, it just brings people together. It makes our whole community smaller when you connect not just this route, but the whole master plan of Pedals and Feet contemplated of getting people around the city by foot and by bicycle and not just by vehicle because we're sort of trafficked out to the hilt. So, it's a kind of a beautiful way of doing it. By the way, it's what attracted Martin Howard to come bring Steelcraft to our city. By the way, it's what attracted Shaheen Sadeegi to come bring Cottage Industries to our city. It's these things, right? So, this is a part of placemaking that has a multiplier effect. And there's a lot of grant money out there and we've tapped into something very special and something big. So, yeah, I wholeheartedly support this and I would counter pretty much every single argument that you said with all due respect. I realize it takes, at first glance, it can seem that way and with some education, you kind of understand it a little bit differently, which I have. So, with that, I'd like to move approval.
Just one more thing. We're not discussing, we're not discussing the maintenance application of this long-term, maintaining it and the costs associated with that. Again, I get the different perspectives. I've seen them try this stuff in Los Angeles and, you know, they think if we build it, they will come and they never come. We just end up with a lot more issues and, you know, so I get that trying to be optimistic. But I'm trying to be realistic. This is $2 million and a lot of maintenance costs over the next 20 years to keep this thing going. I don't think that's even planned in. I mean, do we have a cost associated with that?
We have a cost associated. We came up with one about three years ago and we estimated based on, you know, basically a guesstimate at that time of about $150,000 a year.
So, $150,000 a year just to maintain it?
That's correct.
I mean, in 10 years, we're looking at another million bucks. I mean, don't excuse my expression, but really, you know? I mean, but with that being said, there's a motion and a second.
Again, real quick, I'm the optimist. I have a lot of this in District 2 that's unused and it's been well secured. We don't have too many problems because PD does such a great job. But imagine this. Imagine a high schooler at Rancho Alameda's being able to get on that path and safely get to Garden Grove High School within minutes instead of traversing those main thoroughfare streets. That excites me. I want to see this thing go all the way through the city to Stanton because it's a superhighway and if it's used properly, it can be good. And you can't just sit back and say, "Well, what if this and the homeless?" Well, the homeless is another situation which we have to solve like Kim Nguyen said, you know. That's a whole nother issue, whether there's an open right of way or there's a closed right of way. That's an issue we got to deal with. So, I'm the optimist. I want to see this thing go through the whole city and just wanted to say that.
Just very quick. I just want to give example. In my district, every morning, 5 o'clock, people walk on the street exercising. Now, we actually have a safe path that pedestrian can walk safely, right? I am all for it. And this will define our city. That's it.
Now, you guys don't want me to talk too much, but I cannot resist, right? I'm trying not to ask or give a so many chat. The key to this is safe, right? That's why I'm asking about lining, Bill. You know, I know in the budget, you don't have enough money for lining, but you got to look for money to do that because without the lining, people will not be able to feel safe. If they do not feel safe, they will not walk and exercise or ride a bike through it.
It's going to have lighting along the path.
He said low lining. He says, "No, no, no, no."
It's going to have path lighting that's adequately spaced and served and the foot candles will be appropriate for lighting a path.
Like, so like I mentioned, this would be a really good shortcut for people who want to take a shortcut either by walking or by bike. And I think it may be worth it. Also, in the future, if we have more money, we could also make it into a little park where people can hang out. Now, it's not going to be a wide park, but it will be a long park. So, it may be have some potential and I willing to support it, but please keep it safe. Okay, Bill?
But we're taking money from our maintenance for our current homes. You've got to remember that.
The last comment that I want to make is that, you know, as the only council member has taken the time to go through and almost visit all of Public Works' departments and go on ride-alongs with them and see what they're doing hands-on, out in the sun with the guys who are doing the street work, who are doing, you know, all of that stuff. I just want to say, I made this point out at the last meeting. We need to start thinking of Public Works as part of public safety and they need to start getting the money that they need to do the job that they need to do that they've been kicking the can down the road for years and that now we have this decrepit infrastructure that could burst at any time and cost us millions, hundreds of millions of dollars. So, if this is something that we're going to approve, which I will vote and support, Mayor. I know this is your pet project and I really want to support you on this because I think my bike is collecting dust. So, I'm ready to ride it. I bought it for Open Streets Year One and then never used it again. So, it's $128 of just wasted money in my dad's garage. But I want to urge our council that, number one, we need to get our butts moving on homelessness because we keep, no one wants to put a shelter. No one wants to have this. No one wants, I keep hearing those, but then we keep complaining about it. So, we need to, we got to get it going, number one. Number two, we got to focus on Bill's department and all the work that they're doing. His guys and women are doing all the work that none of us are going to ever want to go do, right? That's hard manual labor. Sometimes it smells really bad and it's not fun. So, we got to make sure that we're allocating that money to get, make sure his team is taken care of and doing what they need to get done for our city.
Thank you. I just want to close by saying, kind of, I think that left a preamble to it, but with a bike path and a pedestrian path along this route and some lighting, whatever, there's also a great opportunity to amenitize the space. So, we could potentially have kiosk retail along various sections. We could have dog parks. We could have walk and talk cafes. We could have dog cafes. We could have, you name it. BMX jumps.
Excuse me, but how about fat cafe?
Yeah, we could have a fat cafe. That could happen. So, I'm very excited to see this go forward. With that, I'd like to make a motion.
Second.
I'll vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Motion received. Six yes votes with Councilmember Brightman voting no.
Thank you. Okay, 6B.
Item 6B. Item 6B is introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending animal control and various fire department-related provisions, including fireworks regulations. And this ordinance is entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council, the City of Garden Grove, Amending Various Provisions of the Municipal Code Pertaining to Animal Control and Services Formerly Performed by the Fire Department That Are Being Transferred to Other Departments and to the Orange County Fire Authority, Including Revisions to Fireworks Regulations." And Mr. Sandoval is here to give the report.
Really quickly, Mayor and members of the City Council, I just want to respond to some of the questions that members of the public asked today regarding portion of this ordinance. As to the fireworks, the reduction in the number of fireworks permits, it's going to be applied by attrition. So, the applicants from last year will be guaranteed a spot unless they don't qualify. And then, once the number of applicants goes down to 30, then the 30 limit is going to be enforced. As to the appeals, there are various provisions of the municipal code that are appealed to the city manager's office. And it's city manager designate, and the city manager then designates a hearing officer to hear that appeal. And when we say that that decision is final, it's final with respect to administrative proceedings within the city. Anyone who is not happy with that decision can always go to a court to try and get that reviewed. But in terms of appeals coming to City Council, normally, we try to limit those to land use entitlements that affect property rights and not, you know, administrative-type permits. If there is any questions of the City Council that you'd like me to respond to, I'd be happy to. If not, again, I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Motion? Call the vote.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
We now have matter. Should we keep plowing through? Anybody want to take a break or are we good? All right. 7A.
Item 7A is discussion on the potential for a community workforce agreement as requested by the City Council. And Ms. Kim is here to give the report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Staff was directed to bring back information relating to a proposed community workforce agreement. There are three tasks that staff was directed to accomplish. The first was to evaluate community workforce agreement in Orange County. The next was to explore possible options for a community workforce agreement in Garden Grove. And the third task was to engage in discussions with the LA Orange County Building and Construction Trade Council. I will touch upon the first two items and we have Ernesto Medrano from the Trade Council that will also provide additional presentation material as well. So, I'll lead off with what is a community workforce agreement. It is essentially often referred to as a project labor agreement in which the purpose is to promote use of local workforce to complete construction projects and develop a pipeline for construction careers within local communities through a local hire initiative. In terms of what community workforce agreements were in Orange County, we identified three. The City of Santa Ana, Anaheim Union High School School District and the Santa Ana School Unified School District. We also expanded our research beyond Orange County and identified additional community workforce agreements. The additional example provided for you on the screen is the City of San Leangel. They established one in 2015 and subsequently an extension was approved. And City of El Monte followed suit. In terms of what options are available for community workforce agreements in Garden Grove, there are typically three provisions in a basic structure of a community workforce agreement. The first is a project threshold. In working with the Public Works Director, Bill Murray, we conducted a research of the last four years of capital projects that were awarded. Provided before you is a summary of that and a complete detailed summary report is contained in your staff report. Essentially, there were 24 capital projects that were awarded in the last four years, of which 13 of those were awarded in excess of $1 million totaling 30-plus million dollars. The other component of a community workforce is predominantly the local hire initiative. I would defer to Ernesto that will touch upon this in greater detail. I would like to highlight the information provided by the trade group is currently there are 432 Garden Grove residents that are members of various trade groups throughout Orange and LA County. We did explore duration. This is typically a term of a community workforce agreement. The average is five years noted, but there are examples of three years with a two-year extension. Some arguments in favor of a community workforce agreement. It promotes local hire. It provides equitable benefits and a provision for a no-strike clause. Arguments in opposition. It hinders potentially impacts non-union contracts or impacts small business enterprise. It limits the competitive bid process and there are uncertain costs associated with the administration of a community workforce agreement. This summarizes staff's information. And now, I would like to introduce Ernesto Medrano to provide some highlights relating to community workforce agreements.
Kind of point it in this direction and then you've got your arrows.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, executive staff, public. My name is Ernesto Medrano with the LA Orange County Building and Construction Trades Council. We represent 140,000 hardworking men and women. We're the second largest in the country, largest in the state. Have 49 organizations affiliated with us and we represent all the 14 trades. And we collaborate with our brothers and sisters from the carpenters union. So, let's get started here. See if this works. Okay, so, just real quick overview and I think we've heard a lot of the information, but basically, public works projects and why community workforce agreements. Public works projects paid for by public funds are in whole or in part. It could be construction, operation, demolition, installation or repair. They're done under a contract and it's the state prevailing wage. And that's what we have in our agreements. It's a state prevailing wage. So, labor cost-wise, there is no additional cost. Oops. Defining community workforce agreement, you heard it's a pre-hire agreement negotiated between the awarding agencies. Local building trades, it covers conditions and standards for construction projects as well as how to resolve any issues that might come up. At its core, it's a contract between the agency, the contractors and the unions to work in a partnership to build. Oops, I think I may have passed that. Do I go back? Okay, so that's it. Okay, so, things to know about community workforce agreements. They're used on public and private projects in all different sizes and scale. It includes modernization, maintenance and repair. CWA has collectively bargained, established work rules, dispute resolution processes and to meet the unique needs of the project. The agreements were first used on big public projects such as Hoover Dam. I know there's been some reference of other agreements in the area. Stadiums, since at the Inglewood Stadium, we got about 3,000 folks working on that stadium right now. The LA Football Club was built on budget and under schedule and it's, obviously, people are enjoying that right now. Working projects like the Memorial Coliseum. You heard one of the members that came up and spoke is working on the Westin Anaheim Resort, a Four Diamond Hotel in Disney. We're hopeful that we'll build the other One Com property, which is on Harbor Boulevard. And we're hoping to proceed with that where we have an agreement as well. So, we do private and public. Community workforce agreements are the only labor agreements to provide for local and veteran preference hire. No one else could do that but through our dispatch and our hiring halls. The elements of the agreements, labor relations and it's efficient dispute resolution that does not impact the project. If there's any grievances or disputes, it gets done on the side. The project continues because to us, the continuity of the work is very important. It dramatically reduces the risk of delays and cost overruns. Labor compliance-wise, certified payroll, it guarantees a high and skilled-trained workforce. You heard John Hannah talk about the, having the best in the business in terms of our apprenticeship training facilities. Ensured workers receive fair pay, health and retirement benefits and the safe working conditions. For the local hiring, community outreach, it's career training opportunities through our apprenticeship programs and provide a continuous and immediate boost of the local economy. We also have, I didn't put it up here, but we have a multi-craft curriculum. It is a curriculum that is provided to high schools, community colleges and community organizations and it fulfills the A-3G University of California interest requirements. It prepares people to come in, but that's mainly for educational institutions. I won't belabor that in this late in the evening. Why I work with the building trades? Well, we believe in partnerships. We are, most of the time, you hear about collective bargaining being adversarial. We believe in really partnering with the awarding agency for the long haul. We want to help you. We want to work with you. Want to make it successful for all of us, for the residents. So, we build efficiently and safely, doing it the right the first time. We only, the only means to true local hires, I mentioned earlier, was to add to veteran preferences to our, how Mr. Hard... to our, how Mr. Hardhat programs is through our dispatch, through our hiring halls, and it only happens through our agreements. We work ourselves out of a job with competitive timelines and quality for our contractors. We recognize that we are part of the private sector, so we don't have seniority in our agreements. We invest over two hundred million dollars in the state of California for apprenticeship training each year. That is a joint labor management program, where I think just about all of you have been to some of our facilities. I think it's one point three billion dollars across the country, by the way, in terms of our training facilities. All public works projects are prevailing wage, so you might as well get the constituent, your benefits for your constituents. Building trends of apprentices, by the way, this is National Apprenticeship Week in this country. I just remember, I know a lot of our apprenticeship programs are having open houses and whatnot throughout the country. Classroom instruction and the job learning, you work, you earn, you learn, averages from three to five years, your apprenticeship, like electrical workers, like five years, sheet metal. Other apprenticeships are four, some are three and a half, but you're going to school, and you have to be in class, and you're also working under the mentorship of a journey-level person reforming. Registered with the National Labor Department or the State Apprenticeship, both, we're certified in both entities. We have sixteen hundred-plus training centers in the U.S., plus partnerships with high schools and community colleges, and I think John Hannah mentioned, we have an LEA relationship. Every apprentice will earn about thirty units, depending on where they're at and what local community colleges are in. I think that's important to highlight a lot of times. We graduate ninety-three percent of the state-certified apprentices. They're out of our schools. Right now, in the state of California, we have about sixty-three thousand apprentices going through the pipeline. Obviously, every four years, on the average, we've got to replace a fourth of that group there. We provide path, a path to the middle-class careers at no cost to the taxpayers because we pay for our own education there. Impacts of community workforce agreements for the awarding agency: it builds relationships and goodwill in the community. It stop, provide for stability and efficiency in, in the project process. Labor harmony, no strikes, no disruptions, no lockouts. Protects budget and schedule of the, of the, of the project. There's risk management built into it, and it's a political partnership. Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Real quick. Thanks, Ernesto. Hold on, let's be orderly here.
Thank you.
Bat, go ahead. Ernesto, do you want to stay up? I think we've got some questions maybe for you.
On one of the staff presentation slide about the opposition to union contract, it is our three area of concern, one of which that I have a little, would like to you to shed some light on it, and that is the impact on, impact to non-union contractor or small businesses. I'm not too worried about big business or big contractor because I think they are generally well capable of competing with the unions, but for the small, you know, very small contractor, how do you see the impact of a union work will, will, you know, will affect the ability to, you know, sustain their work, and especially only those small business in Garden Grove?
We have not heard of any issues where there's, for single craft work, for example. Some of our agreements have thresholds for single craft work, somewhere for twenty-five thousand dollars and above is covered in the agreement. At this point, we haven't heard a lot. It's a tight market altogether, period, because these are the economy and how construction is, but we have not had that feedback. When we have been, when, when bids have come in and the, and awarding agency has found to be a challenge, they reach out to us, we notify our trades, the trades go, notify their contractors to encourage the bidding process. And I will say initially, because people are not aware that there's an agreement or the bidding process, sometimes it's slow in the process in the beginning, but it does pick up. We've had agreements with Anaheim Union Elementary. We did a, an agreement with Centrelia School District, a forty-nine million dollar bond, small projects, all of them. All of them for small contractors, many of them are non-union as well. We haven't seen that, that challenge from our anecdotal experience.
Council member, if I may, I do want to point to the four-year history of public works awarded contracts. Approximately thirty-five million dollars of contract was awarded. That totals about thirteen projects that exceeded a million dollars. One of staff recommendations would be the project threshold to be at a million dollars if direction is provided to staff to negotiate a community workforce agreement in Garden Grove.
Okay.
I'd like to comment. I, I think, to me, this is a no-
Hold on, any more, any more questions?
No, I have no more questions. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Go ahead and sit down, brother. Thank you.
To me, this is a no-brainer. I mean, it's, I mean, I look at it kind of as a win-win type of thing. You know, we're, the prevailing wage folks that come in, the, the entire staff is making prevailing wage. When you bring in the unions, you've got a large percentage of that staff who are apprenticeships making less than prevailing wage, all right? So, it actually, in some ways, saves money for the developer and, and whatnot. It keeps the money in the community. They spend it at our local businesses. It creates middle-class jobs, not low-income Starbucks barista jobs, but real tangible middle-class, I can buy a house and buy a car job for our community members. So, you know, it, it's a no-brainer as far as I'm concerned, so.
I am in support of community workforce agreement because I believe in hiring local, and of course, you know, money coming to the city, right? Spending in the city. Because nobody, I mean, among us, I'm the one that commute for others, do the work. I work, I work three hour, I mean, I spend three-hour commute every single day, so I know the pain. I work in San Juan Capistrano, so any local hiring, I'm up for it, especially in this right, it's definitely win-win situations, so I'm in support of it.
Any other fresh new comments, or? Let's save John for last, because this is, this is sort of your baby you brought forward. Does anybody else want to go first? Kim, do you want to say anything?
I'll go ahead and just say that I'm in extreme support of this. As someone who has parents who are domestic workers and/or CNC operators, this, this such as home, as a young person who struggles to be able to afford anything in my own city that I represent, this definitely hits home. Had I known that this was an option for me, rather than being forced on my throat that I had to go to four-year college where I would graduate with thirty-two thousand dollars in debt, and I had known this beforehand, I probably would not be doing what I'm doing right now. And so, for me, it's really important that we focus on having local hire, even if it's Garden Grove and then the neighboring cities, because we want to make sure that people have opportunities to not only live in their city, but also work in their city, be able to, for instance, as the gentleman from Santiago High School said, be able to coach, be able to, you know, spend more time at home rather than traveling far distances for work. I'm in huge support of this. I think John and I have been chipping away at this and, and coming, seeing this come to fruition over the last three years, so absolutely one hundred percent supportive of this.
Anybody else? I would like to have some comment.
If you guys want to comment, I'm going to make a motion. I'll go ahead and make a, well, I'd like to-
Quick question to staff, because they wanted the motion to include a million-dollar cap, and I'm just trying to get the logic as to why that would be a good thing or a bad thing, or?
Well, we're focusing on the community workforce agreement for public works capital projects. Our history of eighty percent of the funded projects were in excess of a million dollars. I think to address the small business and the smaller projects, the focus is on just our history, so.
And it gives us some flexibility, I guess.
And I think at this point, we're also recommending a three-year agreement with a potential for a two-year extension, and when we come back to the council at three-year term, potentially, we would have metrics to show the local hire initiative, them achieving the goals of the targeted goals that we would negotiate. And so, at that point in time, if the council wishes to direct staff to modify the project threshold, we can do so at that time with metrics and performance at that time.
Thank you.
For a point of clarification, this is, this is, we're directing staff to study the issue further, and then this is going to come back again?
No.
Or is this?
The motion hasn't been made yet.
No, I'm, I know, but that's what, that's what the recommendation is, that tonight we're-
Yeah, it's not a action item tonight, it's to give staff direction on how to proceed, if I'm not mistaken.
Right, okay. Just verifying that. Yeah, I'm, I, I support this. I know that there's a lot of honor and gratification in working with your hands. I come from a long line of blue-collar men in my family, several of which were carpenters themselves, and so I, I appreciate that, and I love to think that students today have an opportunity, if college just isn't in the cards for them, that they have an opportunity to have a well-paying job and, and stay here locally in Garden Grove and be able to live, work, and, and play here, so that's a real positive.
I wholeheartedly support this, and I think this is long waiting for. As a government agency, I don't think we should be in the business of bean counting. We, even though it, there might be some small administrative cost to make sure that, that we administer, you know, the local hire and the hard-hat programs and so on, but I think it's very important to look at that from the community across a very broad sense in term of providing intangible benefit to communities. And with this program, the school, you know, the student programs and the hard-hat programs and the local hire, I think it brings tremendous intangible benefit to the city overall, and I think this would be a, a, a model program that we, we, we want to experiment and, and see if we can expand it even further on other type of project in the city.
I'm going to hold you up, but I want to save the best for last. Oh, okay.
Oh, yay.
So, so I'm so excited because I'm a product of the building trades. I mean, I got out of Rancho Alaminos High School. I knew I wanted to work my, with my hands, but I was top of my class. I could have gone to a four-year college, but I knew I wanted to work my hands. I got, night, I went to Fullerton College. Long story short, I end up by accident falling into the electric, electrical union, and the rest is history. So, anybody that knows me or talks to me knows I'm a big proponent of the building trades and getting into skilled craft. I don't care what craft you get into, but get into a skilled craft, because I was really impressed by all the speakers tonight as far as, I didn't hear one negative comment. We had speakers that, guys that are in the trades, working right here in our city that come forth and give us these great stories. I want to thank Congressman Lou Correa's office. I want to thank Assemblyman Tom Daley's office for having people come here tonight. We have a, a letter from Tyler Deep's office, Assemblyman Tyler Deep. So, there's a wide range of demographics of people that, that support this, and I know it's a good thing going forward. So, I think the motion tonight for me would be to direct staff to enter into negotiations with the L.A. Orange County Building Trades, work on a rough draft agreement, and bring it back as soon as possible. I know we're busy right now, we've got a lot of things on our plate, so, you know, if it can't happen in despite this December, because we'll probably be dark in the second meeting in December, maybe the first or second meeting of January, to come back, I think that's doable with the building trades, they're here to, to work with you. And then, as far as the threshold goes, I'd really rather see something about a half a million dollars, because, you know, once you get to over a certain amount, what's the point? But, you know, you're either doing a workforce agreement or you're not, so, but that can be negotiated, and then, if you can bring us back a draft agreement, and then we'll, we'll vote on that at the time. So, that would be a motion.
Back to that motion.
Okay. Call to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, thank you, guys.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Item seven B, brought forth by Councilmember Reddick.
Well, you know, I think the biggest community concern I get from phone calls, texts, you know, everything, is parking issues, parking issues, parking issues. And quite frankly, Garden Grove PD does a great job, they really do, but they're overtaxed, and quite frankly, parking is the least of their priorities. It's just at the bottom. I mean, and, so if you do get a police officer to get out there in a timely manner and actually catch the parking violator, it's rare that they even write a citation when they're there. They might warn the violator, they might, but, you know, getting any kind of enforcement action and being responsive to the community doesn't always happen when it comes to the lower priority calls. We used to have a civilian parking enforcement unit in the city of Garden Grove. It was disbanded in the eighties, and quite frankly, the, the time has come to re-establish that. My suggestion is a two-person civilian and parking enforcement detail. They're going to probably initially need to be under the police department for training and whatnot, but that's up to the city manager if they're under code enforcement, police. We currently have one hired by the city who works under Bill Murray, following the street sweeper around. Maybe that's an appropriate place for him, but, you know, I, I don't want to get into minutia. We do need this, though, to be responsive to all the community concerns, all the complaints that the community puts out, and I'd like to see us give direction to the city to get it up and running with a two-person unit, and maybe then, after it's running for a year, we can get a report and see how it's doing, if we choose if we want to add to it or subtract or however, but I think we need to get it going. What's nice about this also is as they're driving around the city enforcing parking issues, they're also another set of eyes and ears for the community, so we don't have to wait for these complaints. They can be proactive, they can say, oh, this, this, this curb is turned pink, it's no longer red, we can get that fixed, or, oh, there's a, a code enforcement issue over here that they can report, you know, to the city. So, they have, you know, it's another set of eyes and ears, and we don't have to wait till things deteriorate to where the community's actually complaining about it. So, that's my suggestion. Would like to get any comments, or?
I think the idea has merit. I'd like to see it fleshed out a little bit more. I just kind of want to see how it's streamlined and how it makes sense, and what kind of teeth these people would have in terms of enforcing things. Maybe, like you're saying, maybe there is another component where they're kind of tied in with code, or they're tied in with something else, so we're kind of getting some dual action. So, I don't know exactly what that looks like or what we have to do tonight to move it forward, but I'm willing to, like, at least look at it.
I think George just recommend that we stop looking into it and bring it back to the city, so I, I think, I think I like that. I, over the years, I receive a lot of complaint about parking issue, about people who violate parking, as well as people who, you know, use up the parking along public street that they can no longer be able to park close to home. There's also a lot of code enforcement issue that people complain to me, and it's still happening as they complain about for resident or as well as commercial. In fact, I received three complaint about a illegal, you know, CUP use over the weekend, but staff is not working during the evening, so they complained to us, to me, and they said they filed a formal complaint at the city website, and nothing happened. So, I, I think, you know, a thing like this, you know, would be nice if we can have more staff looking into it.
I'd be a strong supporter of this, at looking at, you know, budgeting to, to make this happen, because we have a lot of people that take our lack of enforcement, and they, they abuse it from neighboring cities and unincorporated county areas, especially near my district. They know we're not enforcing anything, so they, Anaheim is, and they push them all over, and they're all parking on our streets, big trucks, trailers, you name it, it's parked in front of your house or what have you. So, I'm all in for enforcement. Let's, let's, let's enforce our rules and laws here in Garden Grove, and let's put some money behind it. You know, I don't know how quickly it'll be able to happen, but let's move forward.
I'm generally supportive of this as well, but I just wanted to kind of throw something out there for discussion and maybe put it in context. So, we're deep into an economic boom cycle, there's stuff getting built everywhere, businesses are flourishing, we've got a vibrant economy, there's all that kind of stuff. And what comes with that also is kind of all the tension and annoyances and disturbances of parking and code enforcement and STRs and da-da-da, and all these different things. So, we've got a lot on our plate. I've got sort of a high-level theme in mind as we're heading into the next year that we might want to do kind of a, kind of a get-back-to-basics mode of like the underlying core of what it is to operate a city and where our focus should be or whatever. So, we have a retreat coming up in early 2020. Can, unless there's an urgency, can we maybe couch this and, and package this into a broader context of how do we allocate resources to hiring code enforcement officers, to hiring, you know, to addressing short-term rentals as a specific example relative to parking, relative to whatever? It'd be great if we can do the whole thing relative to homelessness and other, back on that kind of higher-level theme of back-to-basics, it's like where ought we be allocating our, our time and resources and staff time and whatnot going forward at this point in the market cycle and, and at this point in the city? And I, since we're all getting a lot of pushback and feedback from our neighborhoods, from our residents, from the ground level, as there's just a lot of activity going on at this, at this point in the cycle, and I feel it's a sign of the times, so I think this is very pertinent, and it's very relevant, but it's one of kind of a number of different similar topics that we maybe should contemplate all together in a package.
I, I agree with that. If I look back to our first annual treat in 2017, I think my, my biggest issue, my biggest hope- hope was that we could just solve problems in our neighborhoods with the residents. It's not the sexiest, funnest stuff, but it's really what we're here to do. So I agree that all of these things have to be brought up at the retreat. However, I had directed staff to come back in January with kind of an overview of code and I know that's something I've been working on with Lisa and her team. So I still want that to happen and I know that that can then parlay into a deeper conversation at the retreat because again, I, I think all of these things need to be discussed. But I just, I just wanted to make, make note of that.
I, I do have a concern with that. You know, last, last year when I got elected, I, I brought some things up and it's like, well, we'll deal with that at the retreat. Let's put it at the retreat. And they call it the council retreat, but it's really not the council retreat. It's a city staff retreat and we sit there and get lectured to for eight hours and we provide zero input. We have no roundtable conversations. It's quite frankly, not a retreat. It's, it's the city telling you what they want to do and not us deciding what we want to do as a board and given direction. It's the exact opposite of what it should be. The time has come. This is, this is something that needs to happen yesterday. As far as budgeting, these officers traditionally and their civilian enforcement officers traditionally bring in about three times the amount of money they cost to the city. Every, all, the whole amount of parking citation goes to the city instead of, unlike the traffic tickets, where only a small amount do. So they write five, 10 a day. They've more than covered their salary. They've more than covered their benefits. I mean, so budget wise, not an issue. You know, this is something I think we need to, we need to deal with now, not put it off until February and then not deal with it at all. Because that's what talk about, that's when, when we say we'll deal with it at the retreat, that's what happened last year. I assume that's what's going to happen this year. So I, I really don't want that to happen. I think this is an important thing that we need to. So my motion is we deal with this now. We let city come back at the next meeting with a plan and we take action. And that's my motion.
Mr. Mayor, to the council, if I could just chime in to some of the, especially to Councilmember Brightigan's comments, I think, to his comment, I think I, we would like to obviously have some discussions with the police chief, Bill Murray, probably Lisa Kim's department, to figure out if we were to do some of this, we would want to put some information together to show council, what would it cost? How much would the officers cost? How quickly can we get them hired? What is their skillset? What's their training that they need to do? Those sort of things. I would think that you would want to do that. To the retreat, it's critically important to us and what we've heard from a couple of comments, that we'd like to spend some more time letting the council talk more about priorities and what's important to you. I do have to tell you what's critically important from the city administration's stance on every single retreat is to make sure we give you a good financial update. Now, I will say, over the last few years, we've done a two-year budget. So last year at the last retreat, we spent a lot of time on financial stuff because we were going into having you prepare a two-year budget. We had sales tax things we were talking about. There were lots of critical things. Now, just four months ago, you approved a, a two-year budget. So we're approved on that. So from my standpoint, I don't think we need to spend quite as much time on financial stuff as we do. However, it's really, really important and our finance staff will be giving you a, that's when we give you our annual revenue forecast that lets you know that revenue is coming in as we told you, we thought it was coming in and whether or not that's going to continue to support the budget that you approved. So from my standpoint, we absolutely need to spend some time on that, but I think we can pare down some of that. And in talking to Maria and other folks, we've, we've started to try and think about how we can spend some more time with some of that discussion about, you know, as the mayor's talking about, how do we get focused on some basics? What do we want to do with some departments? We've heard lots of questions about, we need more support for code, parking issues, potholes, all kinds of things. And so we're going to try and do our best to try and come up with a format that allows the department to spend a little more time doing that. And I think because we're in the middle of this mid-year budget cycle, I, I think it, it make, it makes sense to do that. So message received loud and clear.
No, I'd really like that in the retreat. I'd really love to have time where we can actually talk as a group and, you know, that, that didn't happen last time. I don't know if that was an anomaly or if that's how it normally happens. That was my first one. So, but I think we had all of five minutes to discuss amongst ourselves basically and everything was pretty much just staff giving us reports. So, but anyway, that's my motion that we don't delay this and we take action and get the ball rolling, so to speak.
Yeah, I, I also agree with George. It's, it's not something that I view that it is, is we must have, must do it now, but I don't think the, the, I don't feel the need to delay it for, you know, the, the, until February. I, I think Scott mentioned it right on the, the money that perhaps let Scott and the chief and these take a crack at it and, and, and just come back and report to us at the next council meeting to see how it is and then we can decide whether we want to, you know, to really do something about it now or we can wait, you know, a couple of weeks. But I think that makes more sense. Also on the, since we bring up the retreat, Scott, I, I mentioned many times, you know, I've been at six retreat already, maybe seven. I, I feel that why it is very important that we talk about the finance, but to me, the level of, of information that we discuss in the, about finance during the retreat is not, is not enough. It, it, it like a ban, a random on us and that we do not have enough in, time to, to absorb it. That's number one. Secondly, because it took the major majority of times by the end of the retreat, which is around two o'clock or three o'clock, we all rushed to, you know, wrap up and then, and then, and then completed it. So we, we don't have enough time to really think about what, talk about among us to see what is important for each district and that we, we always rush. So I think, look back at the past six, seven years, I think one day, one day short never is enough for a retreat. I think to do it really meaningful and really come out with something that we can, can give staff and us the direction, I think it should be a day and a half at least.
Can I just jump in real quick? I wanted to second George's motion because I, I share his urgency, his, the need for the urgency here because to me, this is a very, I drive, basic thing that we need right now because I drive around the city a lot and I could write tickets all day long. I get so frustrated, you know, and I'm calling Scott or I'm calling, you know, the, the police department on, on the non-emergency number and I'm reporting things that, that should be seen and should be taken care of today, right now. And I, the councilmen shouldn't have to, to be the, the ticket writer or seeing those issues. So there's a sense of urgency for me. Obviously I want to make sure it's, it's budgeted and paid for, but I think it's a very basic thing that the city of our size needs at least to, I'd say four parking enforcement maybe. And it's not against the business parking or thing. That's going pretty well. To me, it's more in my residential area of people taking advantage of no compliance or disregard for the, the parking sign or what have you. They literally disregard the red curb. They disregard the sign and nobody, because they know nobody's writing a ticket. So I'm frustrated. That's why I sense the urgency.
I, I will say that I didn't just bring this up. I have talked to the chief of police. I have talked to David Dent. I have talked to everybody in, already about it and everybody seems to be pretty much for it, so.
Yeah.
I've been waiting patiently, but the second came before. I actually wanted a second, but I, I did want to say that when this was presented to me initially, I was very supportive. I've had multiple requests on this dais of staff regarding traffic, parking, speeding, et cetera, in particular sections of my district. Hester Lamson and then Roxy and Trask. And we've had, I've had multiple residents come and speak to this council regarding those issues. I was very supportive of the idea with the caveat that they're not just going to do that, that they're going to, if they see the pink curb, they're going to put in, be proactive and put in a work order for that and help out other departments that may not have enough resources to do that work. And I would challenge staff to also think outside the box and even be more creative. I mean, I've spent the last, I think, two, I've at least said it twice now, where we need more park patrol. So how, how could this maybe leverage and as they're driving by, do a sweep around the park? So it's not police officers who should be chasing the bad guys and doing more serious work, that they could also lend eyes and ears to other problems that we have, specifically helping our SRT teams with the homelessness, making sure our parks are being constantly watched. So think about how that, that could check more than one box, you know, knock out a few more birds with that one stone, get the biggest bang for our buck. I do want, I am curious to see what that looks like and what staff's recommendation would be, so I would like to see this go forward. If it doesn't, if it, it doesn't get to that point, for the council retreat, I'm in agreement. I've said that before on the dais that we end up getting a study session. I do think that knowing the finances is extremely important, but I think the way that it's broken out is, is not conducive to us really accomplishing much on our, on, on a council end. Staff, obviously you get a lot and you are able to accomplish a lot, but maybe breaking it up rather than having, you know, an hour-long presentation on, on the budget, you break that up. Maybe do like a quick 10-minute overview of everything and then as departments go up to talk about their specific areas, there's a even shorter presentation regarding the budget of that department. And the way that you structure it and allow for activities for conversation, rather than doing one, you know what I mean? Like we can break this up. I think there's other ways to format that so we can accomplish more and be able to hear each other speak and have our ideas shared and heard. So think about the layout and the format of which the, the retreat is done. There's plenty of more creative ways to not make us feel like we just got a crash course on finances and leave there feeling like we didn't accomplish anything.
Well, and council member, we also have a new finance director, so I, you know, we're spending some time working with her about, you know, some ideas she has for presenting some of this too. So I think you've already seen a few changes just in that respect as well. So we will take that under advisement.
Before we go any further forward, I just want to say I'm kind of confused. So I mean, I made a general comment about this is one of a lot of different issues or whatever, and maybe we talk about it in broader context. We started talking about the retreat. We got sidetracked on that a little bit. The specific item, which like I said, I'm wholeheartedly behind you on this item, is establishing a two-person civilian parking enforcement unit. Has nothing to do with park patrol, has nothing to do with pink curbs, has nothing to do with traffic enforcement or speeding or SRTs, STRs or SRTs or any of that. It's, it's that specific focused item. So I'm fine going forward in that. It's just my thing was, we need to have a broader context discussion about a lot of different things and budget allocation in that regard. And that was kind of back to my initial premise and you guys said, no, let's jam forward on this. And then you augmented it to include everything else that I was talking about. So I'm not clear exactly what we're going forward on, but yeah, let's go forward on all of it. Let's just do it in kind of a academic and analytical fashion and, and figure out what we're doing. I just not sure exactly.
Yeah, the motion was for the two-man civilian parking enforcement detail, for them to come back with that. What was discussed was other things that they could do should they have downtime or they're doing their duties. Part of their duties could be, you know, while they're writing tickets, they, that curb is faded, you know, send in the request to get it fixed, that kind of stuff, which would all be part of their duties.
And I, and I get that, but there's a, but where does that line end? And I mean, park patrol to me is a different animal. Code enforcement is a different animal. STRs is its own animal. There's, there's like a lot of different facets.
But let's say a car was parked on the, in the park or something and they could enforce the, the parking there. You know, there's all kinds of other applications for parking, obviously. But that, that's what the motion in the second was and staff will come back with a report as far as.
I think if it's helpful to the council members, what I'd like to do at least in terms, if you want something back in two weeks, is I'm probably going to have a conversation with the police chief to give me some thoughts about, and talking to the city solicitor just about what's the nature of these positions, taking a quick look at what our current park patrol, parking officer does who follows the street sweeping routes like we talked about. Try to get a little handle about what kind of costs we're talking about for the two positions, what it is, what it entails, where it might best fall under. And then I think we can, at minimum, in short notice, talking to the chief, come back to you next week with just so, with some good information that you can think about.
Or in two weeks.
Or in two weeks, whenever the next council meeting is.
If you think that's enough time. I mean, I, I would like this to happen soon, but it doesn't necessarily have to be the next meeting.
We will, we will come back. We will definitely, if it's not the next meeting, it'll be the last me, it'll be December 10th. So it'll be before the end of the year. So we.
That's if it gets approved.
Yes, so I'll, I'll go through an exercise to try and bring you back some information, what it would take to implement it, how quickly we could implement it, get people trained, hired, that sort of thing, getting vehicles for the, for the, you know, for the staff, you know, all this sort of stuff that you need to make a program, program like that work. And if there's some way that we can sort of expand their duties that include a few other things, we'll, we'll definitely take a look at that as well.
So let's start by framing it from a high level of like, what's the heat map look like? Where are the specific areas where we have parking problems in the city? Because it's not everywhere in every neighborhood and every shopping center. It's, no, 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 but I mean, compared to cities that have parking problems, we, we don't have parking problems like a beach city or like a, I don't know, like a congested metropolitan downtown or that sort of thing, right? We have parking problems where apartments meet single-family residential neighborhoods, where mobile home parks meet with, so I'm trying to get a kind of a heat map on where are our problem areas. So I know we all have them in our districts and whatnot, but it's, they're isolated to specific, so how do we understand the applicability of where we would be sort of enforcing and how? Like where is it relevant and where is it not as big of a deal and that sort of thing?
Yeah, so I think that's something to have a look at. Maybe it's having a conversation with each of us emailing them. Because obviously we constantly hear from the same street, the same neighbors, the same people. So we kind of have an idea of where those little hotspots are too. And then you kind of combine that and go, okay, this is definitely an area. Obviously my neighborhoods that have all the STRs also battle, battle the parking because of the convention center. So it's areas like that that you know are a problem.
And that's the, the beauty of having people, that's their full-time job, is dealing with the parking because they learn those areas. They get to see those every day. They, they learn what areas are the hotspots and which ones aren't and so they can direct their patrol accordingly to, to address those. So that's, that's one of the, the big benefits of having it. And that's why I'm always saying two people and not four, because I don't think we need four people, obviously. But maybe when we come back in a year or so, we decide maybe we do need more. But I think two is probably, going to what you're saying, we, we're not downtown Huntington Beach or LA or something. We don't need a whole department of transportation, but two people is reasonable, you know, to, to address the issue, so.
Even one would be a start.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can keep, I can keep busy all day long.
So we got a, we got a motion in a second.
Yeah, we're not doing anything on it tonight, so can we just sort of move it and move on?
Well, let's, let's do an official vote though. We got to vote it.
You may motion what's listed. I seconded it. Let's just have it back.
Call to vote.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
I knew you'd laugh or collab.
Okay, we do have a heavy-duty closed session item coming up. We're still under matters. Any quick matters from council members?
Going around the horn, I'll go first. Got three real quick ones. Yesterday, we, Garden Grove participated in its very first Veterans Day salute to the vets. I am just so, you don't know how happy I am that Garden Grove got on board that train. I want to give a shout out to our congressman, Lou Coria, Alan Lowenthal, and our senators, Tom Umberg, who attended and made the event. And, and actually Lou Coria and Alan Lowenthal co-sponsored that event. So I, I just want to give them credit for bringing that to Garden Grove. We did get challenged for next year's event to get one of the high school bands to be there. So make a little bit better, but I, I think that was awesome first step and it was a great event. November 23rd at Edgar Elementary School, I'm putting on a run, hide, fight class, co-sponsored by our school board trustee, Terry Rocco, inviting everyone to come. It's a, it's really great firsthand information on how, you know, just, and, and you put all the politics aside, this and that. It has nothing to do with that. This is simply dealing with the reality of today's world. If you become involved in an active shooter situation, how you can successfully extricate yourself from that situation without being a victim. You know, so I, I recommend everyone come to this class that, you know, it's really in high demand in Long Beach and LA and the Bay Area, up in San Francisco, Fresno, you know, that it's a high-demand class. I'm bringing it to the first time in Garden Grove. We can hold up to 200 people in the auditorium, so it's first come, first served. So please be there November 23rd. You can. You can find the rest of it on my, all the particulars on my Facebook, council Facebook. Also, about six months ago, this dais gave direction to city staff to make sure that all commissions meet at least once a year. We're getting close to the end of the year, and we still have a commission that hasn't met. So, I would like to see that resolved, obviously. You know, I know we even discussed it during the, one of the few things we got to talk about at the study session, so, you know, we shouldn't go a year, three years, six years, in one case, seven years, without a commission meeting. That's, that's almost ridiculous. At least they should be get together, go over the Brown Act, briefed on their responsibilities, and, you know, decide who's the vice chair and chair at the minimum, at least once a year. So, time is ticking on that, so, and last but not least, Epstein didn't kill himself.
I just want to publicly thank Craig Durfee. I know, love him or hate him, he does send a, a lot of information, which if you read, good or bad, it's, it's good information, so thanks, Craig, for...
Well, God bless you all, because we're good for the kids.
Okay, thank you.
You back that up. Hey, what I say, other street...
Hold on, hold on, sorry, 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 it's not public speaking.
Just wanted to thank you, Craig, and I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead and move on, so that's all I got.
Yeah, ti-ha.
I just wanted to report out the Korean, the Korea trip, that Scott and I have an opportunity to, to go there a couple, two weeks ago. So, first of all, we have a, we went to visit our sister city, Anyan, and we met the, the mayors and all the council, and we actually asked the grand opening at the art park, and they have a big, I think one of the first one, big air purifier in the park. It's, it's very impressive. So, the mayor of Anyan very excited to hear that our council gonna come over to visit in April, so they're working on the plan, so they looking forward to meet all of you, all of us, in April. And at the same time, the GCS of International of Los Angeles, sponsored for the trip that we went to Korea, and I have an amazing trip where we learned Korean histories, the cultures, and with that, I think I have gained my knowledge and be able to work closely with all the Korean business owner, especially in the Korean business district, between councilmember Joy Pedagum, District One, and District Three, we be able, we will have a great opportunity to, to help the Korean business owners moving forward. Next thing, I would like to say thank you to Public Work Department, Bill Murray. I, I know that a lot of constituent has been contacting me regarding to potholes on Gilbert and the special district three, and I reached out to Scott and Bill, and I drove around within 72 hours, I think of them being fixed. So, thank you so much. At the same time, I want to encourage constituents to reach out to us if you see any, any issue, because posts on Facebook is not effective. We not going to be able to see the complaint on Facebook unless somebody screenshot it and send to me, then I work on it. So, I encourage my, my phone number is public, so you can call me anytime, to addressing concerning issue, safety, I definitely promise you I'm going to work on it. Last, happy birthday to John, forever 21, so anyway, happy birthday.
Thank you, I'll take that.
Two, two quick things. I would like to thank the Shoah Foundation, Garden Grove Unified School District, and city staff, specifically the Facilities Division, for assisting me last week with an event. We gathered at the Community Meeting Center last Wednesday evening for a community dialogue to discuss inclusive and promoting communities coming together and embracing diversity, and, and, you know, warding off hate and intolerance. So, I just want to thank the staff for really working hard to put that together in a relatively short time period. We had about 30 to 40 residents there, and, you know, ranging from all ages, we had amazing, super impressive young high school students come out and share, and, you know, even shed a few tears and just get really emotional. It's really great to be part of that experience. And then, again, special thanks to Congressman Lowenthal, and more specifically Congressman Correa and his staff for Monday's event, for the Veterans Day flag raising and Vietnam War veteran pinning. I would also like to thank OCFA city staff from our Facilities Division yet again, and Garden Grove Police Chaplain Pastor James Scheller for working with me and helping me make this event happen so quickly. I know I bombarded everyone with emails and just trying to make that happen, so I just appreciate the Facilities Division, OCFA, and Pastor James Scheller for, for coming, coming together and putting it a really amazing event. I know when I walked up, I was just in awe, thinking that it was just going to be maybe five or 10 of us, not including the council, and then just not really, but I walked up, and it was just amazing, and, and I saw veterans shed tears, and I just, I was taken aback. So, thank you so much for that.
Just want to report to the council about a message I received from one of our firefighter members. He was just informed that he is not being, bring over to the OCFA, and this is one of the champion that, one of the person that championed that, that, that move. I find that is very disturbing, especially for something that happened, you know, that case ago. I would like to ask, you know, John and our city manager, Scott, to help us look into it, understand what going on. OCFA promised us that no one will be left behind unless that is, that they fail the exam, but I think, you know, we owe it to our firefighters that we, we look into it and see what going on, and see if we can reverse that decision.
Scott?
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
The only thing I'll close with before we go into closed session is, this Sunday, November 17th, is the Meet on Beach event, which should be kind of cool. So, I credit former mayor Tom Tate of Anaheim, came up this coalition of all the Beach Boulevard cities from kind of Buena Park all the way down to Huntington Beach, under an initial premise of sort of wayfinding signage and coming up with a cohesive theme of Beach Boulevard being kind of a special street within the county that leads ultimately to the beach, and that the signage and whatever through all the different cities should be beachy themed with oranges and tans and blues and, you know, color scheme, and then in the bottom right corner shows you Westminster, Garden Grove, Buena Park, whatever city that you're in as you're going through. And I suggested the example of doing an open streets event to kind of draw attention to that Beach Boulevard coalition, introduced them to Aaron Paley of Cars, who did our first open streets event, was the founder of Seek La Via, and he came forward with a concept which sort of got watered down, because it was originally going to be a half marathon and an actual open streets all the way through. Not every city wanted to participate and not, you know, whatever, so came into kind of a little bit of a fragmented effort, but it's still going to be cool in the context of drawing attention to all of the future possibilities, development opportunities, whatnot, along Beach Boulevard throughout all of our collective cities, and it's kind of been cool seeing all the different staffs of the, I think, seven, six or seven different cities, working together over the last year or two on it. So, anyways, if you're out and about, please come out and check out this Meet on Beach event this Sunday.
Is there a time for residents to, like, is it...
It's from, it's from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Our pop-up event will be at Wacom Elementary School, and it's meetonbeach.com for more information. So, with that, we will adjourn to closed session.
Okay.